Meeting will now come to order.
Meeting will now come to order. Mr. Claypool, would you read us in the pledge, please?
Ms. Ryan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sedgley, call roll, please.
Mrs. Coghill, here. Mr. Giambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteher?
Here. Communications with the whole school, Mr. Claypool.
First of all, welcome. Welcome to our Commons. This is one of the highlights of our school when we bring folks through to introduce them to Wheaton-Moorville South. If you haven't had the opportunity yet to look at our Tiger Tradition Display Case, I hope you do. It does a great job through artifacts of chronicling the history of Wheaton-Moorville South High School. And then to my left, there is the South Scholarship Display Case, which demonstrates the scholarship and scholastic achievements of our school. But above your heads, if you have not yet looked, there are 50 flags. These flags represent the various cultures and languages spoken at our school. At Wheaton-Moorville South, we not only embrace that diversity that is represented by those flags, but we celebrate it. And the Commons are here, Wheaton-Moorville South, every day when our students are having lunch, or arriving earlier, or currently leave. Gives them the chance to reflect upon who we are as a school. And we are much more than, I think, a lot of people outside Wheaton-Moorville are. And these flags demonstrate that. While there are countless exciting things taking place in our classrooms, use of technology to improve student learning is that we're near the top of that list. With thanks to District 200 Taxpayers and our Board of Education, we were able to replace all the desktop computers in our school, while creating three Mac Labs for graphic art students. And through the generosity of our boost organization, Tiger Paws, we have more than 35 smart boards, 65 LCD projectors, and 20 documentary cameras. In fact, Paws has begun to replace some of the LCD projectors that they originally purchased. We've also begun to use the smartphones most persons bring to our classroom. But rather than simply tell you about how technology's impacted our school, I thought it best to show you. A couple of our students spent the past few days dropping into our classes, interviewing teachers and students, to get their reaction to the role technology is playing in South.
So, technology's been a really great influence on me. One example is like, in my calculus class, we get to do lots of work on the board deriving those equations. In physics, we get to use Water Pro, which pretty much just does the work for you. Get our vernier motion rotary sensors. Just lots of fun using all that.
Right now, we're taking a little quiz on Socrative. It's basically like, we take, we answer all these questions to kind of give Dr. Jones feedback about how we feel about the current topic and the different topics that we're on. I think it's pretty cool because, you know, like, he doesn't even take too much time to ask us each individually, like, how we feel about how we're doing in the classroom, the topic, how the South will be.
Oh, the smart board tablet helps us in calculus. Gets better to visually see it instead of just writing it down, writing it down. So, I mean, it helps a lot. Oh, I believe they add because, um, it's easier to work on it. Teachers getting more work done with them. You have fun with them.
The smart boards in all the classes now help students get way more interactive.
It's more interactive than online interactive learning. I'm just just fond of it to see how the smart board's working and all these new gadgets. The school keeps on getting, it's really interesting. Just keep learning, it makes very more.
This technology in a variety of ways. First up, we do have a smart board in question that I'm teaching in. So, um, you can put any documents that you have, that students might have, or that I want students to write on. I can put that up on the board, and I can have one or two students up there writing on the smart board at once. My favorite new technology piece this year is my tablet. I use it all the time because I'm completely mobile in the classroom. So, I can actually have this hooked to the smart board through a wireless projector. And a student can be on the tablet and working on the smart board at the same time. Um, the cool thing is I can just put this on if someone's room, and they can, um, solve a problem or work with a graph manipulation. And the students at their desks can see it growing up there all the time.
We were able to do multiple choice practice, exit slips, and reviews for quizzes and tests using the website Socrative. And then they could answer on their cellphones. Also, at the middle school at Edison Avenue, saying Remind 1-on-1, which is a safe way to text students' reminders or helpful hints about their homework, or if they need to do a specific assignment, or if there's any actual questions.
Clearly, we are very excited about the role technology is playing in our school. And we look forward to even greater opportunities in the future. So, we thank the Board of Education and the District 200 Taxpayers for the role they played. And we also want to thank Paws for the role they played in contributing to the technology and education, educational experience for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claypool, a lot. Very happy I had a chance to, uh, and the tour you gave me, I had a chance to visit the Mac Labs and show them the technology. First hand, and I've encouraged all of our board members to try to get a glimpse of what's going on. It's quite a different picture from the prior years, so I'm very happy and pleased. And I know that Ian Pinkton's going to have an honor award for teaching at this looking, and it's going to be carried out. Appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Harris.
Again, thank you for South and hosting us as well. And I know this evening, we also have recognitions and achievements this evening. And we, this evening, want to recognize the Board of Education. And we have several items here that I want to comment on for the Board of Education. First of all, for the community and the audience here this evening, the Illinois Association of School Boards has dedicated this Friday, November 15th, as statewide as School Board Member Day. And there are several activities going on throughout the state and in our community. A week ago, several of you had the opportunity to go to the city of Mooreville and the city of Wheaton and accept the proclamation that this Friday in our communities will be School Board Members' Day. And both Mayor Rummel in the city of Mooreville, as well as Mayor Gresk in the city of Wheaton, and the city councils involved will claim that this day. So, I encourage the community and those of you here this evening, thank board members. Board members, school board members is an unpaid position, countless number of hours, and dedicated time and effort to what's best for education and our community. And I can tell you, the seven members sitting around this table are certainly dedicated to their responsibilities and what they've been elected to do. And are diligent about making sure that what goes on in our classrooms on a daily basis is nothing but excellent. So, I would like to thank each one of you for your dedication. And we actually have a video that staff has put together, so you're going to get a bunch of screen here again one more time. And here's some other words from some of our staff across the district. Board of Education, I appreciate all of your time and dedicated service for the students in this community.
Mrs. Inteher, thank you for understanding that every student deserves a rigorous challenge and comprehensive learning experience.
Mr. Roman, thank you for understanding that this is our school. That's our day off, and there's a very good relationship between schools and parents.
Mr. Paulson, thank you for making sure that our digital learning matches the highest needs of our children.
Mrs. Swanson, thank you for understanding that higher quality of my staff is necessary to success.
Mrs. Coghill, thank you for providing the safety and security magnet for us to use.
Mr. Harris, thank you for believing that all of our students deserve a life of expectation.
Mr. Harris, thank you for being on our, our, our.
At the end, all we can declare is District 200, thank you for your dedicated service.
Yeah. As you can see, there's not ready for primetime players in that video there. We recognized all of the individuals, and I'll speak on behalf of them as one of them. You know, we wanted to make sure that we will get a copy of that video out for everybody. You can feel free to watch it anytime you want. And I would encourage you to every once in a while, depending on what's on our plate. And, um, as you can see, we're using video in the central office as well. And we're putting together some, um, opportunities to promote what good things are going on at the board table. So, um, one last thing, I want to take a minute and recognize, receive the letter today from the Illinois Association of School Boards in regard to two of our members here for a special award. These are the Master Board Member School Boards. And, um, two individuals have reached that level. First of all, Mrs. Inteher is now a Master School Board Member and will receive this gift here for 200 or more credits for the School Board Association. So, congratulations, Mrs. Inteher. And also, Mrs. Swanson, you have reached another milestone. You've already received the Master Board Member. You have a indicator now that you're up and beyond the call of duty in the Illinois Association of School Boards. You have a place here to add to your agenda there. So, congratulations to you as well, Mrs. Swanson. And also, just would like to take a minute and let the community know that our board is very, very active in their own professional organization. We attend meetings at the regional level, and all of our board members participate in that. All of our board members go to the Page County meetings and learn about what good governance is and boardsmanship at the School Board Table. Also participate in statewide trainings and organizations to make sure we are doing the very best work here. So, again, I just want to congratulate the board for your professional approach to this huge responsibility in the community. And thank you for everything you do for the kids and our history. Thank you. That concludes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Harris, for your report. I have been, not only looking at my agenda, thinking that, you know, a couple times as president, I should know better. And I did skip over modifications to the agendas. So, if there are any modifications to the agenda that board members wish to make, we will make them at this time. Are there any modifications? All right, well, good, then I'm not too bad for taking that order. We're onto public comments now, agenda items, are there any public comments? Okay, then I have to do a student superintendent report.
Okay, I'd like to begin this evening, the superintendent's report, with just a brief update on Veterans Day. And across District 200, I know several board members had the opportunity to attend those events. Myself, I was fortunate enough to attend one that was very unique. And that was at Monroe Middle School on Monday morning, first day. And we had a very special opportunity at Monroe where one of the actual colleagues and veterans that served with Jimmy Monroe, the namesake of that school, came and spoke to the student body and the staff. And I know Mr. Roman and Mrs. Inteher was there as well. It was quite a very unique experience to hear that man, Mr. Kelly, tell the story about his relationship with Jimmy Monroe. And he was the one who actually wrote the application to the Secretary of Defense at the time, nominating him for that Medal of Honor. And talked about what a great person he was, and really how he lived and served as a soldier at Big Town. And it is so important to understand, and a lot of people believe that school is named after our third or fourth president, James Monroe, but certainly it was not. And we certainly want to make sure that the community always continues to recognize that it's a very special opportunity to do that on Veterans Day. And so Monroe was, Jim was packed, and it was just a phenomenal opportunity. I don't know if you want to comment from your own perspective, but it really was significant and very unique experience. I also had the opportunity to be here at South since we're here this evening. I was here, socialized teachers here at South lead the Veterans Day opportunities where they had eight to 10 veterans up on the stage telling kids about what it really means to serve your country. Had veterans from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Afghanistan, and Iraq. And so therefore, each of them, it was very unique to see the generations and have telling the high school kids a story. But you know what? The stories didn't change that much. Whether they were in North Africa, South Pacific, or whether they were in Iraq and Afghanistan most recent, the stories were very similar about service to our country, and certainly it was a nice recognition. And finally, I went to Hubble, and again, at the middle school level, I had the opportunity to view another veteran talking about what it takes, the dedication, the time and effort to be a soldier, and some of the advantages he shared with the kids and really what it means to serve your country. So, I know in our elementary schools, we also had a lot of different activities across the district as well. And so it is a very special day, and it's the teachable moment on that given day. It's very important we continue to have school in a day. Calendar's on our agenda tonight, and you will see that that school day will continue to be on our calendar. And it is, it is a nice opportunity. Any other comments before I move on about Veterans Day? I know everybody wanted to briefly.
I just wanted to say that I was on the board when we made that decision. And we were concerned a little bit that that's what our community might take it as an affront because we were not honoring it as a holiday. And we made a, Dr. Catalani was the prime mover in all this, and I want to give him recognition and credit for that, for one of the most important things that it could have done for our children on Veterans Day. Because it now has become a teachable moment and not just a day where kids go and, you know, pick up a drink at a Veterans Day sale or something, you know. They really learn, and it's been amazing to watch over the years how our teachers and our administrators have embraced and stepped up what they do. So, thank you, Mrs. Swanson, for supporting the decision. Mrs. Coghill, to Anthony Johnson, and all the board members at the time. Because that was, we weren't sure how it was going to work out, but we took the risk. And it's really, I think, paid dividends to the community. And I think our veterans really do good about it, too. They look to God. So, thank you.
Well, at this board, we'll get the opportunity, this time next month, the adopted calendar will continue that. So, certainly want to make sure that, point that out on our agenda this evening to post the calendar for this next year.
I just got a couple of anecdotes from those, from Veterans Day at Wheaton-North. I had the opportunity to chat with a World War II veteran who was a prisoner of war in the same stallag that they made the movie The Greatest Gait, you know, with Steve McQueen about. And he said, actually, the movie was inaccurate because there were no Americans involved in that escape. And the reason being, they only wanted people who could speak two foreign languages. And the Americans couldn't do that at that time. So, it just, you know, goes to show the importance of that. And then secondly, at Washington, there was a gentleman there who had fought under a captain. And he was 98 years old and could still fit in his uniform. So, Mr. Trump.
Wow, I hope I can be able to do that someday. Thank you all, for those of you who had the opportunity to attend it. It certainly is a wonderful opportunity. Next item on the agenda, I want to comment briefly on the personnel report. One of the items that hopefully the board will be approving this evening on the personnel report is the selection of Matt Biskin as our new principal of Wheaton-North. I just want to share a couple of comments, why that recommendation is on agenda this evening. Couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet with the department chairs of Wheaton-North High School and talk about Mrs. Volo's retirement and what they would like to see in the next principal of Wheaton-North. And there were four themes that came out of that conversation that I spent with her for about an hour, hour and a half. One was to be responsive to the needs of students and staff. Another was to be visible and available to all stakeholders in the school and community. One who models best practice and leads by example. And then the last item was one who would continue to ensure we move forward. And the department chairs were adamant that they supported, and on behalf of the faculty in that building, that they believe the current leader there, in the assistant principal, Mr. Biskin, can certainly carry on. Now, I can tell you from the student time to see, I am very proud to recommend Mr. Biskin for that responsibility beginning in the 14, 15 school year. And certainly encourage the board to approve that recommendation this evening. Mr. Biskin is here tonight with his wife and parents. Matt, congratulations. And assuming the board will approve it a little bit, thank you for the new opportunity and leading Wheaton-North into the future. Looking forward to that. And Mr. Biskin will do a wonderful job there. We have excellent education opportunities going on in Wheaton-North. And I know he's the right person to move forward, leading that school. So, the next item I want to comment on was a professional level opportunity I had last week. And I just want to share with the board a couple items that themes that I had the opportunity to attend the Suburban Superintendent's Conference. And it's a very unique opportunity in that there were some highly regarded educational experts across the country were at this conference. I just want to comment on a couple of the speakers and the people I had the opportunity to talk with. And the theme of the conference was leading, learning, and living in the digital world. Very typical, our conversations constantly are revolving around that. How we're going to prepare kids for the 21st century job market and career college and career readiness. I had the opportunity to hear from an individual named Paul Davis that works for Discovery Ed, one of our vendors that we use. And we approve, the board approves, the contract for we use video clips all the time in multimedia in the classrooms. And he talked about how digital tools have allowed kids to create and innovate, and how important that is as we move forward into the job market for our kids. Dr. Mimi Ito from the University of Cal Irvine was another speaker. And her research currently is around connected learning. She talked about how teachers have to balance the interests, the peer culture, and the academic expectations, and making sure that that is the basis for 21st century learning skills. And in instruction, she talked about also what online learning is. We're in the process of building our own online environment for our kids over the next several years. She talked about that you have to anchor resources in the web environment. They have to be digital, they have to be finger-ready and accessible. And to weave in social media, you cannot ignore social media. It is such a huge communication tool that kids have to be able to navigate and understand and determine what is relevant, what's not. And finally, recognize how the school learns, blogging, digital portfolios, those types of things. That learning goes on constantly, and teachers being able to provide opportunities for students to learn outside of the official classroom environment. Our kids are doing that now, but as we move into more of a blended learning, an online learning environment for some of our students, these are critical skills in her research. And she founds are going to be very, very important as we move forward. Another one of the speakers, Dr. Rich Feller from the Colorado State University, was focusing on STEM, more in the manufacturing job market arena. He talked about two types of jobs in the United States today. You're either an owner or you're a temporary employee. He said that's the way all job markets are moving forward. And you have to have the set of skills to do one or the other. If you're an owner, you got to navigate the entrepreneur environment. And if you're a temporary worker, like he said, everybody else is, you have to have a skill set to be ready for the next job. And he talked about that's the focus when it comes to preparing kids for those types of jobs. All jobs have to go with soft runs, and the temporary have to have access to continuous professional development. So, I think that serves us two ways, preparing students, but also our own staff. Making sure we continue to build capacity within the ranks and prepare kids for those opportunities. Mark Edwards, who's assistant, or the superintendent of the year for Mooresville, North Carolina, was there and spoke about digital learning. And he had led a district through a one-to-one initiative in K-12 in his district. And he said, you have to understand, it's an instructional project. It is not a technology project. It is an instructional project. He went into huge detail. I think that's a key thing that we have to remember as we continue to move forward. You saw examples of that here this evening with Wheaton-Moorville South and what's happening in our classrooms. The instruction is the key to be able to use the tools to make it happen. Finally, one of our speakers was there, is a Harvard professor, Tony Wagner. Tony Wagner from Moore Village, Pressals, Olivera Quino, speakers coming up for the state conference for the Illinois School Board Association. He had, I had an opportunity to sit and chat with him a little bit. His research is around creating innovation, and he's going to talk, I know that's his theme. I know that's what he's going to talk about for those of us that are going to be attending here in a couple of weeks. And he focused on that kids need to be able to think and reason. Again, you see the themes here. They have to be able to apply. They need, the world, he said, the United States seems to be the number one's world producer of ideas, not stuff. That's the difference. Be able to think and create ideas and create thinkers. He also made a comment that caught my eye, obviously based on one of the board agenda I was receiving was about community engagement. He said, helping all adults in the community understand the changing world and how public schools will be able to prepare kids for the future. It is so important, and it's our role to continually engage the community in those conversations, how quickly this business of public education is changing, and it's changing quickly. It's not like all of us, when we attended schools as adolescents. It's different. It's very, very different. And we have to be able to continue to educate our community about those things. So, those were some of my takeaways from that. It was a wonderful opportunity. And certainly going to, I know my staff always likes that when I go to those things, I start emailing them and ideas about doing some things. And I actually sent her a picture of me wearing Google Glass. If you haven't seen Google Glass, it looked a little darky, but really it's a computer. If you haven't seen those, I've tried them on, I was playing with it. It's voice activated as well as touch on the side where you've got the internet right there. And that's, and so obviously hands-free. They were telling, the guy from the STEM, Dr. Feller from Colorado State, he said, that's where the work environment's going. Work environment's going to keep the hands-free, and the instant access to information is going to be easier than ever. So, it was very interesting to see some of that and, you know, some of our top experts across the country. So, this is where we're headed. This is where education's going. And as we continue to look toward that, and it is very important to keep that in our forefront and extend that cutting edge of the ideas on how we can prepare kids for the future. Unless there's any questions, that concludes the superintendent's report.
I just want to thank you for being so on the forefront of being out there and networking, going to all these, you develop colleagues, and finding out what the future is. And I mean, that's, that's leading, and I appreciate that you're, because I'm not a good person.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. We now come to the consent agenda. And we have many items on the consent agenda. First of all, acceptance of the gifts from the Hotiron PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Otis Max. Approval of proposed policy 6.185 for North Student Learning. Approval to post 2014, 2015 school calendar for public review and comment. Approval of English Language Arts Standards, grades K through 8. Approval of safety. Approval of safety project change orders. Approval of ISPE maintenance grant and school energy efficiency grant. Approval of bills payable and payable, approval of minutes, October 9th, 2013, open and closed and October 23rd, open and close. And approval to destroy recordings and close sessions prior to June 2012. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of the staff of administrators, certified, classified, and non-renege status. Are there any agenda items board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, then maybe have a motion to the consent agenda.
I'm going to have a second, second.
Second. Moved by Mr. Roman, second by Mrs. Swanson. Are there any questions on any of the consent agenda items? Mr. Paulson?
I was wondering if you could explain some of the item number eight of safety project order change orders. Trying to dig into that a little bit, I just very much understand the difference between the things and clarify some of those things.
Certainly, as we completed the upgrading of the safety projects that I know the board approved at a past meeting, we did run into some unforeseen conditions at three individual sites. Went along, Mr. Farley commented briefly on those. And if there is any specific questions, certainly we can address those as well.
Yes, the board approved these safety projects back in July of 2013. It was, came out of recommendations that were made by the safety committee, district safety committee. There were some items when we, although we did walkthroughs and scope reviews with the contractors, we ran into some issues with the SSC, we were trying to put it on the outside, but we decided the terminal was better to try and put it inside and weren't able to affix it to the glass, a concern for having it there. So we had to put it on the station, had to put it on. So if you had an SSC, lady Oles, you'll know that was there. The whole was to do it outside on the outside surface, but that wasn't plausible and qualified anything wrong with it. We also had Wheaton North High School, the initial plan was to put a single unit in and have the main office entry, the doctor from the school and visiting with the principal there. We decided to include some additional locations there as well. We also had an additional unit with the VASP program, the four and a half school program at Weasbrook, which used to be the door of the main doors of most of the schools too.
So that's the extent of the change orders, unless there's any specific questions.
Just a comment, all of these change orders still allow, it's been just a fall within consistent ongoing progress, so that they won't have any changes in their current.
Are there any other questions?
Just one other kind of problem, Mr. Biskin, my opinion is selected for principal. I'm delighted that he is. I had the pleasure to work with Matt on the collective bargaining committee a couple of years ago, and I enjoyed working with him and was very impressed by how he performed on the day. But equally as important, he's a Sox fan. So he's a winner, and I know he's a winner, Mr. Anderson's Martin's brother.
Thank you for that piece of vital information. I can, I agree too.
Cubs fans, we better unite here. We're looking at everyone taken, so anyway. I did have a question on the white and dark curriculum for clarification. In the board report, the statement that the standards were asked to potentially differ from common core, and I'm sure they exceed the common core. If I could just say a brief explanation of how they exceed for the benefit of the community, because I know we get some criticism that, you know, of the common core that they don't necessarily apply to our kids. And I, you know, if we have differences, it's probably the area of being anti-advocative in the moment. And also, I couldn't make sense of the codes, but that we can cover some other time if you want. It might be helpful to you about legends, so the community can see them if they look at, if they look.
I'm going to turn it over to Kate and let her answer the questions.
Sure, the abbreviations in the codes, the common core standards are broken into four common domains that are the same. And so that R is reading, writing, and then speaking and listening, that's the SL, and then also language, which is the grammar. That fifth one comes into play with kindergarten through fifth grade, and that's the reading foundational skills, which is your phonics, phoneme awareness, print concepts, all of those kinds of things. Then to further complicate it, they take the reading standards and break them down into literature standards and informational tasks. So sometimes you'll see RL and then RI. The standard may even be the same in its language, but it's applying differently if you're using it with literature than what you would with informational tasks. I mean, you also asked about, you know, how are the standards different in their application in District 200? And a lot of that is the text complexity that we use. Some of the standards, if you take a close look, are actually very similar from third grade all the way up, where you're drawing logical inferences and then citing evidence from text to support your inferences. That is almost word for word as you go through the different grade levels. But what is different is the level of text complexity and the structure. So where there are some items that we will be using at sixth grade, we may be using seventh grade text to actually analyze that. With the reading framework that we started in the last couple of years, we're using, we apply all of those standards. There'll be grade level, whole class time that we'll use text and support to teach those standards. But then in every class, there'll be a time that is smaller group where we use the text at that student's reading level. And for many of our students, that's well above. For some of our students, that's below. But in being able to draw logical inferences, we want them all to be able to be at a grade level, but we want to push them past that. If they're past and well above minimum level, we also want to be able to bring that down where a student has comfort level at a text and be able to look at those same skills and standards. So for the most part, the common core standards are very similar to what we have adopted, but the level of text that we're expecting of students to apply those standards is higher.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Are there any other questions? Okay, then Mrs. Summer, will you call for the vote, please? And board members vote ahead, line up.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gignari?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaihill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes.
Well, she carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Biskin. Thank you very much.
Yes, congratulations and welcome. Okay, we have action item versus the acceptance of the 2012-13 audit.
As board members are aware, each and every year, we have an audit of our last fiscal year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley at this time to introduce our staff here from Baker Tilly. Mr. Far.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Like to introduce Jason Coyle, for those of you who have been on the board for a while. I used to have to introduce Tim Cole, who would stand in front of you as a resident of the community. Jason is also a resident of the community and will be starting the child, the new child of the year for your five years, so.
Yeah, both five years, because he's one full.
So Jason comes with us to Baker Tilly, which I'm proud to say has been in the district for the past few years and done our audits. And each year the board has asked to accept the audit. We agreed the audit to do to the finance committee recently and have them run through the audit and we ask them to come to the board and have the board accept the audit as well.
All right, well, thank you. I'll try to take this relatively brief as I have in the past, but I am happy to be a resident of the district now, so looking forward to sending my kids to the great schools here. You have two different documents before you want. The larger one, which is the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. And then the smaller one is what we call our management letter. And I'll go through both of those. I'll start with the financial statements, the larger document. And again, I'll just go through this briefly, but there are a few items in here that I always like to point out. And the first is on page one, page two and three, actually, it goes a couple of pages. And this is our audit opinion. So this is the information in here that actually comes from our firm. The rest of the information in the report is all the financial information of the district. Our opinion looks a little different this year because there's some new audit standards that went into effect. There's now some headings and things are, I think it's a little easier to understand. It doesn't make it longer, unfortunately, but the key to it all is the level of assurance that we've given hasn't changed. So it continues to be what we call an unmodified opinion. So nothing has changed in the level of assurance that we give on your financial information. It still is correct in all material respects. The opinion just looks a little different if you were to compare it to prior years. After that begins the management's discussion and analysis, the MDNA, starting on page four. If you read nothing else in the financial statements, I would encourage you to read the management's discussion analysis. It summarizes what went on during the year and highlights some of the bigger changes, but it doesn't take too long to read. On page eight are some pie charts, the top being the revenue that's coming in and the bottom being your expenses going out. Obviously, at the top, you can see a large amount of your money is coming from the community in the form of taxes, property taxes in particular. 69% is coming from property taxes. So you're supported significantly from the local community as opposed to from the state or federal funding. And on the bottom, obviously, most of your expenditures are going out to instruction or other direct programs for students. And only 8% of your costs are going to administration and business, which is the same percentage as it has been in past years. If you flip over to page 11, this is called the statement net position. Slight change in terminology this year, and now it's called net position. Basically, this is all the funds of the district combined together in one column. And we add on all the capital assets of the district as well as all the investments in your schools and your equipment. And also, we throw in here the long-term debt, the bonds that you have outstanding. And that gives us at the very bottom, the net position of the school district of 76 million, a little over 76 million dollars. If you flip a couple more pages to pages 13 and 14, this is probably what you're a little more used to seeing on a monthly basis. These are all the funds of the district. Couple of things I'll point out on this sheet, the operations and maintenance fund. You'll see a couple of different classifications in the fund balance there. The $10.6 million is called assigned fund balance. That's what's been left over from the grant we received last year. And then also, your transportation fund continues to be in a deficit position, as I'm sure you know. Flip over a couple more pages to pages 16 and 17. This is what we call the income statement of your funds. I should point out that the general fund here includes both your aid fund, your education fund, and your working cash fund. So I know you're used to seeing those separately, but for external financial reporting, we have to include those together. And overall, your fund balance has increased approximately $3 million, 3.3 of that being in your main operating fund, your general fund. So obviously, the direction, as a financial guy, that I like to see things go, and that is the increase in your fund balance. Later on in the report, we do have a schedule that breaks out the educational fund and the working cash fund. That's well later in the report on pages 62 and 75. I only mention that to say, when you look at that, your educational fund is now in a positive fund balance. For the past several years, it actually had been in a deficit position, but most of that 3.3 billion dollars increase in your general fund was related to the educational fund. And so that now comes up into the block, if you will. And again, congratulations on being able to do that. Also, on page 17, you'll see in your debt service fund, as you know, the proceeds from Hubble was committed to repay debt. And this, you'll see that here, you'll see the proceeds of $4.9 million from the sale of the Hubble property, former Hubble property. And then the $5.2 million going to the escrow agent to be put away for the payment of the bonds. With that, I won't comment any further on the financial statements unless there's anything I can answer for you or if you had any particular comments about financial statements.
You know, if I can, we did, that's right. We did meet as a finance committee, as I said, and present to us, and so we had, Mr. Matheson and myself, we had the opportunity to dig into things a bit more and ask more questions. And so just thinking that maybe this is the appropriate time for finance committee to give our report as opposed to waiting to the end. And so, once again, I'll give kind of the brush, you know, summary of things and then Mr. Matheson can follow up with some more of the technical, technical things. You didn't talk about the communications to the.
No, I guess, you want me to do that?
Yeah, why don't you go and do that?
Sure. Yeah. The other small pamphlet is what we call our management letter. I, this is a little bit of a lengthy document with a lot of words in it, I don't think I can go through all of it. Part of what we do when we come in to do your audit is we look at the internal controls within the business office, the checks and balances, if you will. We do that as part of planning for the audit. It allows us to understand your operations and we can appropriately plan our audit procedures around the risks in your operations. The byproduct of that is if we come up with any recommendations in your controls, we're required to communicate certain ones to management and to support through this letter. I think the good thing to point out here is we didn't have any recommendations around your operational controls, which would be controls around your payroll, your accounts payable, cash receipts, things like that. Your controls are operating effectively, you've got good checks and balances in there. We did have a couple of comments, as we have had in the past years, relating to the fact that we helped assist you in preparing your external financial reporting. Standards say that that is a weakness in your internal controls, but in order to be able to not have that, basically, you have to have somebody on staff that has a background and experience to be able to do that. And obviously, there's a cost benefit analysis, and 98% of the schools that every audit continue to have, have that risk. But as I said, the good thing is operationally, your checks and balances are all there and that's what we like to see.
So that was one of the first things that we actually, you know, kind of asked about was whether or not that is typical for not only 98% of the districts, but districts our size. And the answer is yes. And so, as you mentioned, this is something that we've seen for a number of years, so nothing to be alarmed about, as well as the capital asset tracking, which you would have to hire an outside firm to do. And that is expensive. And again, not many schools get into that, so. So anyway, that's good. Then in terms of just where we stand on things, just to give you a snapshot, as you mentioned, our net position increased by 5.5 million. Capital assets depreciated by 5.7 million, which is the net effect of 8.1 in depreciation and capital asset additions. And that really kind of reflects mature community. So I, this, this net position, I think, is something that we don't talk about a lot, but it's just another way to look at the health of our school district. You know, the taxpayers do pay for all of the infrastructure. We often key in on the operating funds and expenses, but there is, there are all of these other assets as well. So good thing to know there. Our long-term debt decreased by 11.2 million. And we are currently, or at the time of the audit, carrying 182 million in principal. And what that really means to us is that there's just a tad under 53% of our long-term debt margin is still leaving. That's allowable to us, so that's something good to know. Our revenues exceeded its budget by 1.8 million. And our total fund balance increased by 3 million, but the operating fund balance has increased by more than that. And what that really means to us is that that fund balance policy that we put into place, where our target is 25 to 40%, was running at 29%. So we're right, right there. And then lastly, in addition to the audit, we looked at the annual financial report from the state. Very interesting report. I suggest you take a look at that sometime because it's just another way of looking at how our finances are. And once again, they are estimating for 2014 that our designation is recognition, which is the highest recognition, the highest designation you can get with a score of 3.8 out of 4. And they look at some of those same things, the fund balance to revenue ratio, the expenditures to revenue, days cash on hand, the percent of short-term debt remaining, which is 100%, and the percent of long-term debt remaining allowed to us. So all in all, a healthy picture.
I should have let you go first. It's very good talking to you.
Mr. Matheson?
Yeah, I have a couple of other items. I want to kind of go over just some items that I think are important and we've talked about in the past and so on. Maybe I can flip through a few of the things that are important.
days cash on hand, the percent of short-term debt remaining, which is a hundred percent, and the percent of long-term debt remaining allowed to us. So all in all, a healthy picture.
I should have let you go first. It's very good stuff.
Mr. Matheson.
Yeah, I have a couple of others. I want to kind of go over just some items that I think are important and we've talked about in the past and so on. Maybe I can flip through a few of the pages where we're important and do that. But on page ten, which is the comments that the district, in effect, wrote in the management discussion, you know, it's talking about some of the key factors that are going to bear on the district's future and will have significant financial impact on us in driving how we spend dollars in the future. Those are well summarized, the state funding issue we talked about, the potential shift of pension costs, negotiations, of course, coming up next year, capital projects and how we refund those, technology, which we've been talking about a lot this tonight already, and the potential impact of the Affordable Healthcare Act, how that will impact the district. So, you know, that's a good summary of the challenges that we're going to face in the coming years here in financial. One other item, we're going to page twelve. If you look at about the fourth line down, there's nine called state retirement contributions. That's the amount that in theory the state is contributing on the larger district for retirement costs. This is the infamous pension nightmare that goes on in the state of Illinois. And that number is twenty-four million dollars. That's the one that we don't know where we're going to have to pick that up out of our own tax revenue. It's on page twelve. It's, you know, again, we've talked about including this item in our financial statements. Well, there it is right there, the twenty-four million. And we, the state, both that's the amount the state contributes. And then below, or to the right, is the amount of the grant the state gives us currently. So they're mutual in a current sense. If we, if that starts getting passed on, that's the high exposure right now. So, you know, that's a number that, when we go back to that page ten comment, absorbing pension costs, that's the number. So, you know, that's twenty-four million. And if we're going to talk real briefly, let's look at the bottom of page twelve. The total expenditures of the district, including that twenty-four million, is one-hundred-and-ninety million. So literally, almost, what is that, twelve, thirteen percent of the cost of the way this district deals with those pension costs that could get passed on in some way by the government state aid or increase and what we have to pick up or whatever. So the dynamic of that cost is tremendous. We talked, we're going to, page thirteen, real quick. We're going to, just again, to point out that transportation fund, at this point, we have about two-million-seven deficit fund balance. We're going to talk about that a little later, how we get rid of that. Basically, page fourteen. Okay, most our attention is already on that, was that we are currently at twenty-eight-point-six fund balance in the operating funds. And our policy says twenty-four, twenty-five is our minimum. You know, had we not got the grant on the last year, we would not have achieved that. In year 2012, we would not have achieved that level. So we can see the significance of receiving that. It just, what is working cash? Working cash is the ability to fund the business operations and not have to borrow, and not have to incur the cost of borrowing. So that's why we emphasize that fund balance so much. Again, we talked about the Hubble one you already coming in, the five million from the sale that was turned over to retired debt, in effect. Page twenty-three. In the kind of the profit and tax revenue section, we're going to be talking tonight about the levy. And we have to remember that the levy increase, in a total sense, without new construction, is limited to cost of living. If we look at the numbers below at the bottom of the, what, one-third paragraph under tax revenues, we can see that the cost of living increases were one-point-five percent in 2011, three percent in 2012, and I think we're going to be seeing one-point-seven in 2013. So in fact, that's the highest amount, without regard to new construction, that the district can levy against the homeowners of the community or the assessed valuation of the community. So, you know, even though we, you know, that's limited by law. We talked about super budget. Okay, page twenty-seven is going to point out up near the top. We did overspend the budget. You know, we had our budget hearings about a month, month and a half ago. And, you know, we talked about the ounce of the budget. This year, again, what we're showing in the operating funds, we're actually about three million ahead of the beginning. However, we, you know, we go out and we display that budget. And in that display of the budget, we say we're going to spend so many dollars. And we may get more revenues along the way. But one of the issues is we overexpented what we, in effect, budgeted. And so we have to consider in the future the potential of having a new hearing if we anticipate overexpending the budget. You know, we've got new revenues to fund it. It wasn't like we were using old revenues. But technically, we're authorized by the community when we go through the budget process to limit to those numbers. So that's something we'll do probably toward the end of the year. Page thirty-three. The risk management issue, and that talks about our self, you know, we're self-insured for health insurance. But we have to provide, in effect, ultimately comparable benefits to the ACA, health insurance programs and so on. So we need to monitor, make sure we're not giving too much away in cattle and plants. And that's something that we have to deal with as time goes on as well. But again, it will affect us, even though we're self-insured. The, kind of the last dialogue, there's two, mind your own business. In the past, you can see when we look at the treasures report, that there was a, we removed a lot of information. It was about, you know, interest allocations and so on, and it's kind of confusing schedule. Well, that's been removed now. The reason that maybe is is that we currently, when we invest money, we're getting less than point-two percent return. So, I mean, you know, we had, here we take thirty million dollars in the working cash fund, and we got fifty-six thousand dollars of interest last year by investing there. That's about a point-two percent, not two percent, point-two percent return. So that's kind of why that other schedule's been removed from the report as well. Page seventy-seven is another key page, I think. And that shows the, kind of the trend line in assessed valuation. And if we look at that, we can see that in 2011 or 12, with the community's property that gets taxed, decreased the value about six percent. Okay? So in theory, we're, even though someone's tax rate or assessed valuation goes down, their percentage of the total, if it remains the same, they're going to pay basically the same tax, even though the rate may change and so on. We'll talk about that a little later as well. And then the last page, seventy-eight, on the bottom, there's nine in there called tuition charge per pupil. And that basically is, in theory, that'll show up in the report card. But it runs at about eleven thousand dollars per student in our district. And that's the total cost minus certain revenues that get offset. So that's kind of the number per student that we have. And, you know, this thing's used for another reason, but it's a way to kind of monitor costs. So that's kind of the highlights in the report as well. Now that you're thoroughly vetted in the financial statements. Brad, now you're on, so appreciate it. Back to this one.
Are there any other questions before members, Mr. Palmer?
Let me just add a few. Respect the financial statement.
I know I've looked at these in the past, and I probably haven't explained them in the past. But could you give you a short explanation or definition of the net position?
Net position? Yeah, it's similar to fund balance. It's similar to fund balance, except in net position, we utilize a different basis of accounting. We go from modified to full accrual. There's small differences there. I think the biggest thing, the biggest difference, though, is the fact that incorporate the capital assets of the district within the net position number, along with the outstanding debt that the district holds. And neither one of those are on the fund level financial statement. So this is the only place you see that, is in the net position statement. And so, once you factor that in, obviously, the numbers get bigger, and they also get a little different on the fund balance.
And also on the same page, the third bullet of the other financial highlight, you wrote, however, only fifty-point-one million of these expenses for government activities were offset by programs to save the children. I want to focus on the word only. Is that an editorial comment or merely a descriptive comment?
Well, technically, this was written by management. I would probably go with descriptive rather than editorial, if I have to put words in the mouth of management, but yeah.
That's okay. Bill Farlow, she is with us. So, thanks, Rosemary explained about debt margin. Oh, on page twenty-seven. In going through the financial statements, I think there were references to our government funds and fiduciary funds. And what's in our fiduciary fund with one-four, one-seven?
The fiduciary fund, there is primarily the student activity funds. Obviously, with the high schools being a unit district, they tend to be rather large, and the high schools with all the student activities and programs that go on there.
But that is a combination of all, our middle schools and high schools.
Correct, correct, yes, yes.
And then on page twenty-eight. I guess this is also a management comment. At the end of the second paragraph, it says, the district's devotion certificate of deposit is on the radar of either you or Roser, the responsible for this event.
Well, the audit standards require that any marketable securities, which the negotiable CD of all, it happens to be the only marketable CD of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand out of your thirty million dollars of investments, requiring marketable securities be, have the rating disclosed. In this case, the negotiable CD didn't actually have a rating. Most negotiable CDs, given their nature, aren't rated. But it's, doesn't mean it's not a safe investment. Negotiable CDs are originally derived from banks. It's similar to a rigorous CD, but it can be bought and sold on the market. So maybe it's a safe investment.
And then if you can go down to the second last paragraph, on the, again, the last line, we're talking about where we keep our deposits with financial institutions, total of over sixty million. And you tell this amount of about one-point-five, or is it collateralized and uninsured? Does that pose a risk to us?
Potentially, if the banks were to fail, it could. The unique thing about the timing of this is, obviously, in June, you get a large amount of property taxes that come in. And so sometimes it takes a little bit of time to equalize the collateral with the large amount of property taxes that come in. So I'm sure soon after the end of the year, it became fully collateralized. But sometimes it just takes some time as you've got some large amount of money coming in. Thank you very much, David.
Are there any other questions in the panel members? Okay, then maybe we have a motion to, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion to send that out.
Make the motion, you said, you are.
Good time, Mr. Matheson. Second. Seconded by Mrs. Swanson. Is anybody color open?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Packhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. And next, second on the attendance, the action of the 2013 levy, Dr. Harris.
Again, each year, as the board knows, we must present our levy to the county. And I'm going to turn over to Mr. Farley at this time and explain what the recommendation is for levy. Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. As was mentioned, this is the time of year where the Board of Education has asked about the levy. But the school district, obviously, is the largest, as has been mentioned, but it is the largest funding source for the school district. And we are required to ask the board to adopt the levy so we can turn it to the county clerk. So I'm going to run through my presentation, somewhat similar to the past. I'm going to run through some quick terms. I know the board is well aware of these terms. Aggregate levy, that is really the levy of the district. And as the Board of Education was aware, as has been mentioned tonight, we're limited by the consumer price index. So the aggregate levy and the requirements that are in place each year, we exceed one-hundred-and-five percent of our requests from the prior year, is on the aggregate levy. And that's what usually the public carrier does, the CPI is so low, and we've grown expectations over the role. We sit around in that position tonight. Net service levies, that's obviously the principal interest to pay back on the funds from the school district. That's a suburb levy that the county clerk, that's outside of the cap, and the county clerk will levy enough funds on the cap of the district to pay back the principal interest to the district. Property tax extension limitation law, P T O L tax caps is that limit that is in place in here. It started in the early nineties, and we are limited to the extension of the lesser of the CPI of five percent. As mentioned in the past, it's over five percent, and it's been as low as one-tenth of a percent. The tax cap, again, has been in place since the early nineties and has not changed much over that time, if at all. So I'll mention tax caps, I don't want to be wrong by calling tax caps. Consumer price index, as I mentioned, what that is, that's the basket of goods and services and cost of living. An increase that the Board of Education has to follow each year as per the tax cap and the equalized assessed value. That's the value of the land and the property within the school district. A little bit more on the CPI because it's such an important factor. It's computed on a monthly basis. We track it, Information Commerce Bureau, Labor Statistics. Going a little bit more detail further in this presentation about volatility. Sometimes it occurs within the CPI, and I'll talk a little bit about what we see as far as a percentage on average and how that works. We use it, obviously, for our finer projections. It's one of the assumptions, and I can see the key assumptions that we use. So we are tracking it quite a bit. The correlation of that basket of goods doesn't always seem to follow what we do. We, obviously, are an employment-heavy industry. It's, you know, through the budget numbers, you know, eighty percent of our business is people, salary and benefits. So it's not always in correlation to what we do on a daily basis here in the school district. We have gas, that we, our transportation costs, the pricing of gas really seems to drive what happens with the CPI in recent years. I took this picture out of Quad City this weekend, I did fill out. It was about as cheap as I am, I almost went and bought the S C A to grow the bank. You can see, S is down to two-sixty-four out there, and I think around here, it's under three dollars now. For those of you who recall, we have a graph here that shows that the plant's gas prices a few years ago dropped the CPI, which was over five percent in August, down to a tenth of a percent. And had, obviously, had a significant impact on the school district. When you're using the assumption of two-and-a-half percent, you're tracking the CPI, it's well over four percent for the first time. And then for a collapse like that, obviously, the tax decisions remain as a school district. Another factor of the CPI that's important to mention is that what we marked as teachers, the last teacher's contract, the third year of that contract is tied into a factor of the CPI. So that's another consideration as we move forward. It's obviously an impact, as was mentioned before, that's part of the budget process when we adopt the budget. The impact that CPI, the levy as well, is taken into consideration for budgeting purposes. Lasted, the CPI, as been mentioned before, is one-point-seven for this year. We were notified of that number back in January of thirteen. So we can all, here, going into this letter process, what the CPI is. So that's one good piece of information that we have, that we'll know what the CPI is going into the budget year, each year. But during the year, I lose more air of worry about what exactly you're going to comment on. To give you a little history of where the CPI has been over the last ten years, it's averaged about two-point-four percent. A little bit of the last five is probably around two-point-two percent, but that's one-four percent in there. But as you can see, we had our highest CPI and our lowest CPI back-to-back. Again, just, you know, the chart shows it's pretty much all over the board. On average, though, it's been around two-point-four, two-point-three percent. So how old, the CPI, I can assist you, as I mentioned, we track it month-to-month. We get the information from the Bureau Labor Statistics. I had this chart up earlier, in late October, for the finance committee, and we weren't able to update September because of the government shutdown. But now we have Bureau Labor Statistics back on task, and they are providing the information. So we plugged in the data for September. And keeping the index flat moving forward, we anticipated two percent of CPI. Again, that's anticipating that the index will stay flat. Historically, the last quarter of the year, we've seen that index drop, as a bit of history. Also, the price of gasoline, I... Also, the price of gasoline, as we can certainly look at that. So we'll continue to monitor that closely. We'll learn from the board as soon as we know. It will be part of our January, annual January review with the Finance Committee, as well as with the full board on fiber projections as to what the CPI, and it'll be able to find the information out right around the end of January. But as you can see, it's tracking, having gotten two percent throughout the years, the CPI has stayed pretty low for this year. Talked a bit about the equalized assessed valuation. Obviously, that has been a roller coaster as well. During the early two thousands, moving into two thousand eight, when things were booming, the equalized assessed valuation of the district was growing quite a bit. Like many districts and communities, saw a significant decrease when the housing market and the economy crashed after two thousand eight. And the EAD, as Mr. Matheson mentioned, has dropped significantly in the district over the last four or five years. Some of that has been squelched a bit by a few TIPS, Cantara TIPS, and the TIP two in Warrenville coming off, or back under the tax, also helps to allay some of that. But, you know, we were fortunate to have those two TIPS. But there has been a significant drop in EAD over the past four or five years. The impact, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is on tax rates. And we talked a little bit about that earlier as well. As EAD goes down, tax rates go up. During that time of the early two thousand, tax rates were actually falling. And as a school district, we have to be very cognizant of tax rate ceilings that are placed statutorily, that we have to, through the tax caps, we have to monitor and keep an eye on. There are school districts out there that are starting to put their statutory limits. So it's, we might talk a little bit more detail later on about why we're levying, what we are with some of the funds. It really has to do with starting to see some of those tax rate limits coming into play. This is the chart that just shows a history over the last ten years, what the CPI has been and what the extension actually has turned out to be. And I think the board is well aware that every year when we do a levy, we make sure when we levy, we capture the new growth in the community. And really, what you see between the red line and the blue line behind me is really the gap, the difference that's created by the new construction coming on, the tax rolls for the first time, because it's tax outside of the cap. You know, in the moving years, there was, you know, quite a difference, you know, the margin between was far greater. And as we've gotten into the economy shrinking, we see that tightening up as well, or anticipating that to be the case moving forward. We used to see about thirty million dollars on average coming in in new growth each year, and that number has shrunk quite a bit. We got to be reading a little bit, if you look at two thousand ten, there's what Cantara coming off the tax roll, or coming on the tax rolls, the TIP ended. So we have benefited somewhat from the end of those TIPS. Last year, TIP two in Warrenville ended, so we did see a little bit of a bump up from that, where we barely cleared twenty million on new growth. Again, and we'll talk a little bit later in our enrollment study, I don't want to jump too far ahead, we are starting to see some housing starts in the community, maybe some commercial, obviously some commercial during the past Roosevelt and Neighborville Road that's coming on to the, on to the tax rolls as well, and it's served on at the school districts, definitely the city with sales tax. But we're hoping as we see the economy start to pick up, that we're able to see some of that new growth come into play. Here's a chart that illustrates again the last ten years, kind of shows where the new growth of the school districts, that obviously Cantara sticks out there in two thousand ten, point about over here. And you can see that we, it's been, it's been, or had over twenty of it in the last couple of years. And again, last year was about fifty, fifty-two of it in Warrenville. So how much should we receive? You know, in a world with no new growth, we would love to one-point-seven percent. That's the CPI factor that we got, we know we need that, so the amount that it's going to spread across the community without the accession of the new growth. So really, when you look at a prior year levy, two thousand twelve, it was just under a hundred-and-twenty million. One-point-seven percent of that will bring in one-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars of tax revenue for the school district, that one-point-seven percent. Again, this levy is going to be asked for more than one-point-seven percent, but again, it's really just a capture that new growth that's coming on, on to the tax rolls. And that's important to understand, with the amount of our request, it's not what we anticipate yet, and it's really just to cover the unknown. Because of that, at this time, we don't know what our new growth is going to be. We know what the CPI is, but we don't know what new growth is going to be. I'm a little bit discouraged in some of the estimates I'm seeing from our townships as to what that is going to be, but we'll keep an eye on it. Historically, it's garnered a lot of an extra one percent of tax revenue from that new growth. But again, it's really, we have to wait and see. We will not know until we see the data in March, what the actual new construction will be for the school district. So we're kind of going to wait and see here, what will happen with the new growth and new construction. So this chart spells out really what the levy request is for the school district, it's by fund, it's by dollar amount. We do have to look at the overall percentage increase, as I've mentioned, under tax caps, whether it triggers the need for a public hearing process or not. As you'll see, our request is four-point-one percent, a hundred-and-twenty-five million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Just worth pointing out that the pledge was not really adopted back in the fall, or I guess in September. You know, the value here is to capture the money for the budget, for fund, as the budget for the school district. Again, we're noting, if you look at the special levy request, it's out there, we have some space, you can see that we have, if you look at the limits that are along the side, that's where you start to max out, and so the statutory limits of the school district. So the specialized fund, which is in the education, actually is in the education fund of the school district, has a rate limit where we have some room, so that's why the levy request in there is higher. We also have maintained for the S-Fund, the O-M, and the other funds, that we have some space there, that we have requested funds in order to receive what we need or what we budgeted. So our overall request is four-point-one percent, or the five percent cap. What do we expect? Yeah, we expect a one-point-seven percent increase that's reported through P-Tel, plus any new growth. Again, we're still waiting to see what's going to come in. Also, those general, their own interest levy, that dollar amount is known for going forward. It shows an overall levy increase, request of four-point-five, four percent, but really the aggregate numbers, the key numbers for the purpose of tax caps. So this is just the last five years, what we bask for versus what we've actually received. And you can see that there's always, you know, whatever proposal is, it's always higher than what actually ends up coming in at the end of the day. Tax rates, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, tax rates really aren't as key a factor unless, they are for us when it comes to statutory limits. But really, the tax rates that are on the tax bill are really, you know, the EAD, as your EAD goes down, or as the EAD of the district goes down, the tax rates will go up. But we are just, we are basically generating the same amount of money. If you're a median, if your home is, you know, we anticipate EAD to go down again this year, the local township is posted on our website, if you look at the website, they anticipate EAD of the district to go down to four percent, not that any, this is more of which, Wheaton, it's other, it's Blaine, and it's in other areas, but they're our largest township that services our school district. You know, so if the median number is four percent, and your home value goes up four percent, really the tax bill should, on the aggregate, let me show it go up to one-point-seven percent, based on what we are requesting, the new growth, again, is outside of that. So when you see tax bills vary, is when you have a tax bill that our home may not have gone down as greater than the median EAD of the district versus a home that maybe can go down greater than that, maybe pay less. So, and it's kind of a convoluted way of explaining it, but it's really, that's really how the tax bills are figured out, how EAD comes into play for the homeowner. I included underneath the overall tax rates of the district in this chart, that you can see the aggregate levy and how it doesn't necessarily correlate to what the tax rates are doing for the overall of the district. And then the percentage change on the aggregate levy each year. And again, two thousand ten has spiked up because of Cantara as a percentage over the prior year. So the recommendation of the administration as to levy to capture the one-point-seven percent that's allowed under the tax cap laws and capture any potential new growth that comes into the district, the levy that we're presenting to you tonight will accomplish that. And I take any questions you may have on the levy.
Hi, Juan. Just to, again, refresh you, so we're saying that if there was no new growth, the community's increase in tax rate would be one-point-seven percent across the board, you know, proportional to their individual rate within, I mean.
You're saying tax rate or tax bill?
I'm sorry, tax bill.
Yes.
Basically, one-point-seven percent.
Correct.
Okay, so new growth. And then, when I looked at the resolution, we're total levy without bond interest, about a hundred-and-twenty-five million. And when I looked at the budget that we've agreed to already, you know, back in September, the budget shows a hundred-and-twenty-one million of revenue. What's the difference between those two? Why do you do that?
Well, part of the difference is that, you have to remember, our budget is two different separate levies. We also look at calculation rates of when we receive the funds and what percentage we receive of the funds that come into the school district. So there is going to be some variation between, because each budget year is the, it's the second payment of the prior year levy and the first payment of the new levy. So it's not always going to match up exactly with the levy that we propose to each year.
When you say new growth, does that mean what is closed? You're anticipating, like, homes that are closed for the coming year, or is there a construction?
New growth is related to construction, it can be a tear down, it can be homes that are built on green space, new, any type of new property that comes on to the district tax rolls, that was not there before. Or, or in the case of a tear down, that was built something well new.
And the expiration of TIPS as well, which was from, when TIPS expired, that's new growth that comes on.
Yeah. It's confused as to if a home, if you're anticipating two thousand fourteen, right, then if it's just under construction, like Pine Farm Road, let's say, those homes slowly are closing, and, but they don't get a full tax amount that first year, right? So do you, and is that all factor then?
Yeah, assessors will, will bring them on to the tax rolls as, as they come on, and you know, it'll be captured in that year. So if we look at an overall dollar amount value, you know, the chart that shows the total amount of dollar new construction that came on to the tax rolls that year, is it possible they go over multiple years? Yes. The Mariana's, I think, just opened, and I'm guessing their taxes are not, you know, their property taxes are not coming on immediately, or as they, as they build up.
Is it correct that our assessed values for our homes is an average of the past three years? I believe.
Yeah.
So they'll, you know, gradually come up, they gradually went down, everybody was complaining, well, my taxes are still high and my value's down, because the prices were higher.
Try and look at it, I think, cook on this cloud, I mean, all this, maybe.
So it's, yeah, so it's going to take, since it's an average, it's going to take, it's going to take some time.
That's why when the housing market started to crash, it was, it was, it didn't go down dramatically at first.
Can you just refresh for the public the importance of why it's, we need to capture the new growth beyond just having it this year?
Yeah, so you have one chance to capture it, and when it comes on to the tax, on to the tax rolls, that's the time to capture that new growth, because you can't go back if you capture it.
So if, future boards, if we neglected to capture something, what would that be, what would be the result on future boards?
Well, the starting point for the next year's levy is, is going to be less. So whenever any, any tax levy moving forward, if you, if you don't capture that, is working off a lower number. So we forever are not to capture those funds.
The way I understand it, so we have the tax cap portion of the levy plus the estimated new growth. We can't capture the estimated new growth without going through and past the tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, and then, the way I've always understood it, the majority of that value of new growth comes from commercial properties rather than individual homes, which has, so the way I always looked at it is, that value of that new growth is, does really impact individual taxpayers, more of a business type new growth, is that the way that?
It could be, it depends on the community. You know, if this community has a lot of rooftops, you know, again, we'll get a video of what we're going to talk about, some housing starts that are coming. But good, about Mariana's is a good example, there's, you know, we are built out, right? But I think, very exact, I think we're a built-out community, we see more and more ways of folks starting to find, you know, ways to build, build on space, or if space comes available, we didn't think was going to be coming available. So, but it does, a lot of time to this, we're making commercial as well.
Just one comment on that. I mean, you know, basically, you take one, twenty-one project in downtown, we, you know, that's building three-hundred-plus units, and potentially there'll be children coming out of that, that property going to school. And so the tax rate will be based on the assessed valuation of those properties, and that's going to help fund those children going when they go to school. Before it was a big lot, we didn't need those dollars technically, you know, there were no students and so on. So, you know, it can, it will, will grow in that respect. So, you know, there's a lot of other planned multi-immerse developments like that in downtown Eden, you know, some of the development that's coming up, maybe multi-story one right downtown. So again, if they produce children, we need to fund some of that.
However, I'm just confirming, Mr. Parley here, by look, that particular property is under a TIP. So we will not receive any new tax dollars in that for twenty-three years, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not sure if that's TIP one, two, or three.
Okay.
TIP one's beginning in two thousand seventeen, I think they have two of them in the next five months, so.
Yeah, so I just want to point out, we won't see any new dollars there until the TIP expires for the city of Wheaton. So that's the downside for school districts in regard to TIPS. TIPS are not our friend, especially when there's housing units involved. It, it's very challenging, quite frankly, for us when we have those types, we understand the community development piece, but when there's, when there's houses there, that's a concern. I just wanted to point that out.
Good point. You know, the, we practically mentioned before, like County Farm Road, that would be one that would add students without that gap of timings. Ultimately, they do come on, you know, the tax roll with, or like Cantara, in this case of twenty-three, it could be shorter once it gets to, you know.
Okay, so, so, I mean, now we're having this discussion about TIPS, so just to clarify, and then I think we need to move out and get, because we have a lot of business to cover, but I want to make sure these questions are asked, answered as well. So a TIP that is with a commercial development is, is, is less, how do I say this, is the lesser of two evils. So the evil, the one that's more evil would be a TIP that would be residential development, because then we could get the kids with no money to get them up. So a TIP that is commercial development, at least we're not getting any new students that we need to educate along with not getting the money. We're not getting the money, that's the bad part, but the double levy is at a TIP that involves residential.
Sure, as an example, the Cantara TIP, if you, if you recall, that was split in, that, that TIP was about sixty-fourty, forty percent was ours, and sixty percent of it was neighborhood two oh three, and all commercial. So they were golden. The TIP, portion of the TIP of Cantara that was in our school district, while it did have some commercial, had a lot of residential. Part of the reason we went to Warrenville back in two thousand is that we'd like some impact. We, you know, we do have the ability to go after impact based on students that are coming out of the TIP. So we do have a history, and we've gotten eight, nine dollars over five years, it's committed to the school district, just based on that impact.
One comment there, I want to make clear that I, I don't post.
One comment there, I want to make clear that I own the post-TIPS. So there are community developments and there's all those things to communities. They put some financial demands on schools to accept their community resolution.
Can I just say one final thing? And that is, this was also part of the finance committee discussions. And I neglected to say after the audit report that both Mr. Farley and Mrs. Iver have been so professional and helpful at those meetings to us. They're always organized, they're always prepared, they're always accurate, they know the information. Mr. Farley has a history of managing like Disney. He under promises and over delivers. And so I, it was very helpful and hopefully that is your experience with them in these meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Yes, thank you, Mr. Farley, Mrs. Iver. I know it's a, it's a challenging job to manage as well as you do. I know it's very dedicated to both and we really appreciate that as well. We know we're good. Okay, I know, Mr. Roman, can you, for everybody to sit with some people? Are everybody taking up to take a vote please? Do we make the motion? No, we didn't. Sometimes we do, yeah, it's amazing, yeah. So I will ask that a motion be placed on the floor to accept the 2013 levy.
I move that we accept the recommended levy for 2013.
With Mr. Roman?
My second.
Second to that, Mr. Paulson is ready for the discussion.
Yes, please. I am, first of all, well, Mr. Farley, as always, as you all know here at this board, I struggle with this topic every year, but I've remained consistent. I think there's a, having balance with regard to using this as a vehicle to capture as many tax dollars as we can, but I also think there's a balance for us to have, there's, you know, incumbent to also manage our expenses. So I believe that in the spirit of the levy and the ability to capture, tax to the max, as I call it, those policies I can't support. And therefore, tonight, when we take the vote, I will place a no vote on the levy.
Are there any further comments?
I just have, I think when we voted in September, in favor of the budget for 2013, 2014, school here, we may have given to support the levy, so how are you going to favor it?
Anybody else?
Well, the last thing is, is that the tax to the max is somewhat of a byproduct of the constraints that were put around us in terms of being able to calculate each year's levy, having to go back to prior year's levy. And if that weren't a constraint, there would be more possibility that local school boards on a certain year could levy less if they felt they needed it without feeling as if they were putting future boards in a binary, you know, box by not doing it. So it is, I think, a law that nobody likes, but we are not the unit of government that made it, but we are the unit of government that has to deal with it. And so while I respect the happy medium concept, it may be a happy medium for us today, not so happy for a board 10 years from now, giving the laws that we have. That's why I would support it.
One comment I want to make on the, you know, the reasoning that this thing involved, many years ago, the districts were not limited in any way to levy. And, you know, many times districts would increase their levies 10, 15 percent in and it became uncontrollable. So the legislative units wisdom basically said, we're going to put this cap on this thing. You know, and is that the perfect situation? No. But what the problem is, if we don't tax to the max to the point, we run into the problem that we cannot go back and, let's say, we have a big demand. Let's say, for instance, technology is something we want to fund to a number. Well, if we let this, these dollars go away, we can't fund that and we can't recapture it, even though that might be a one-time limit. And so, you know, we have to work within the legislative direction that even has been imposed on us and, and, you know, unfortunately, we cannot volat, you know, have any volatility of levy of the tax cap. So I think our mission as board members has to make sure that we are spending the dollars wisely and monitoring. We don't have to give it all away to this or to that, but I think it's the only way you can really have a, you know, a necessary base that we need to have.
Thank you. That's very, you know, it's a, it's an interesting discussion and a thought-provoking discussion and I thank everybody for explaining their points of view. And, and I just, I feel as though we're in a box and we need to do what we need to do because if you, if Mr. Madison said, if we leave those dollars on the table today, and Mrs. Swanson also said, they're lost forever. So, you know, Mr. Madison gave the example of, you know, of a technology expenditure, you know, my bigger concern, concern about technology is that we get an aroma spike and then, and then aroma spike continues after many years and we've left dollars on the table, then how do we educate those extra students without having, you know, having left dollars on the table? So, so that's another instance, or another reason, I think, that we need to adapt this levy as presented and I will vote yes as well. So if there's no other further comment, I'll ask Mrs. Senator to come for the vote. Any other comments? Mrs. Swanson, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Giambiani?
No.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, motion passes, gets 2-1. The next item on the agenda is a proposal of a resolution to debate the working cash fund pursuant to the provisions of Article 20 of the school code.
Yeah, I'll just comment briefly, I'm going to turn to Mr. Farley to talk a little bit in detail about this action. This action came out of the finance committee and from the audit and a lot of the things we've, it was pointed out earlier this evening. We have been carrying a negative fund balance in the transportation fund for several years and that's a direct result of the diminishing funding at the state level of transportation funding. What's happening is it continues to be more of the burden of the local taxpayers' district. But, so therefore, we have run a negative balance and it certainly is going to, as the recommendation come out of discussion, the finance committee, that we correct that. And I want Mr. Farley to talk specifically about the details and certainly I believe others might check in as well. Mr. Farley, anything else you'd like to add?
Just the, the district has carried a negative fund balance in transportation for a while. I would say, as we mentioned, the vote reported was a factor of state funding, as Dr. Harris mentioned. You know, it's one of, you know, one of the, it was probably carried, in my opinion, or we carried that to show that it was, we were negative in this fund directly due to the transportation funding of the state. I think we probably carried along with our shoe, but I think it's time to transfer, you know, some fund balances around to put the fund in a positive situation. It helps with cash flow. You know, part of the lack of state funding has forced us to, you know, from a budget standpoint, put general state aid into the transportation fund to help prop up that fund, which is something I don't like to do. I think that funding is there for classrooms and really any funding that, you know, that , you know, for transportation because of the lack of state funding takes money out of classrooms. So it's probably more of an editorial than anything stated out of this. But they, it's worth noting in this last audit, we did increase the amount of negative fund dollars in the transportation fund. Some of that was moved to state, starting to catch up. But again, they're not anywhere near the funding they used to be. And we have 400,000 in motion for this year. We used to be around 2 million years ago with what we got back just from regular transportation funding. So I think it's appropriate, we have cash flow issues in that fund as well, so moving this cash, moving money from the working cash fund is appropriate for the resolution to prepare our turnings for this move and with reference to moving forward.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the floor and a discussion completed.
I move that we move funds in the working cash fund. Can I press a comment?
Will Mr. Roman, Mr. Second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Cockhill, discussion.
I had the thought, part of finance committee and then so on, is when we move this, this is really a true picture of where our working cash balances are, you know, that we're kind of, you know, we've kind of been lending this morning on a regular basis, so this puts us in a much more clearer state of what our true balances are.
It doesn't have any, any impact on our fund balance versus the policy we have as just moving on. Both are operative, so it's neutral. It'll show a cleaner on the balance sheet, which is what Mr. Matheson.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Mrs. Senator will come, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Giambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, motion agrees, seven. Next is acceptance of ISP resolutions. Next is acceptance of ISP resolutions and direction for delicate voting. So we have your packets in front of you and I think we need to go pretty much resolution by resolution or do you want to just start with resolutions that perhaps you don't agree? Mrs. Swanson?
That would be my suggestion is presumably everybody's perused the resolutions and just for people who are watching at home, these are for our delegate assembly that are in the association of school boards and the district. It's submitted a resolution. It goes to a statewide committee who gives each resolution a recommendation of adopt or do not adopt and that those resolutions with those recommendations go to the delegate assembly. We will have a delegate at that assembly, so what we need to do is provide direction as to whether we agree with the recommendation that the committee gave or don't agree. So that would be my suggestion is anybody who has resolutions for which they do not agree with the recommendation, you know, say what they are and then we'll see whether the board feels that way.
Okay, does anybody want to start off with anything they just agree with or is everybody pretty much in agreement with the resolutions committee? No? Mr. Roman?
I disagree with the ISP resolutions committee's support of the change to what I call the resolution of the 12. This is an unnecessary shot at the common core. I know and respect the principle of local control, that school boards and their side over districts. But I think it's up to every school district in the state to incorporate as much of the common core as it physically can, physically can afford to. So I think that our association should be not, should not give support of anything that's, you know, in principle that would pose a common core. And so I cannot support this modification to the resolution of the 12.
Any other comments on there, Julie?
I'm just curious about that one as well, just similar, very interesting, Brian, I think, how is it affecting our, I know the street, teachers that it is, especially in Illinois State, it looks like it's putting quite a pressure on that and changes, but what do you think?
Here's the reality, again, aside from the resolution, you know, it is the expectation from the Illinois State Board of Education that we teach the common core standards in our classrooms and as a school district in the state of Illinois. We are going to be assessed on it. We explain that repeatedly. What they're asking for here is quite frankly going against what, you know, what we're going to be assessed on and what we're being a held accountable to the taxpayers in the state of Illinois, let alone our community. Quite frankly, I, I too would disagree with this resolution. I do believe, you know, the common core standards are not a bad thing. However, just using this cookbook, that's not good either and we haven't done it. We haven't taken that approach in math or like Jartsing, we won't in science. We're going to take our current curriculum, adapt it, make sure we don't miss anything. The rigor is the issue that you're hearing about if you've had conversations with teachers because the rigor, especially at elementary middle school level, is significantly different. And there we have to make some changes to be able to hit those targets. It forces, yeah, it forced the issue and we're going to be assessed on it. So anybody that's fooling themselves thinks that this is going to make a difference, it's not. And so, you know, that's my opinion. Maybe, I don't know, you know, if you've had a chance to read the resolution, but it's, you know, it's basically opposing, you know, it's saying it violates local control. And I think we still have local control. I don't think we need to have it legislated out. We still have local control. We're just making sure we're hitting the targets we're going to get tested in. That's, that's my, if there's anything you'd like to add.
I agree with Mr. Roman and Dr. Harris. I, you know, I, this, the actual position statement that is being run that says that they don't want, they want local districts to be in charge of their curriculum and that they want to say, including any common core curriculum. Now, common core are standards, they are not curriculum. I think there's a big confusion out there and people kind of have this conspiracy theory that the government is going to be teaching everything. So I agree with you. I don't think it's a good thing for our association to be going along with that false notion of what the common core is going to result in. So I would support opposing that.
Actually, I was going to be my sole objection to going along with the resolution committee as well because if I read that, I would have very, still would have Dr. Harris. And, you know, in the, in the title it says curricular material, but then it talks about the common core standards. Well, the standards aren't the materials and the standards aren't the curriculum. So it's, it's, it's a mixed up jumble of words here that really don't make sense. And so I think for us as an association to be supporting something that really isn't clear is a problem in the first place. And then secondly, as Dr. Harris said, to say we're not, we're not going to adapt, or that the association will support not adapting standards that our state has to impose our standards is ludicrous. And I just, I just don't think, I started being very strong with my words, but I just don't think that that's in the best interest of, of the Illinois association's people. Really. Any other, any other comments? Okay, so.
The only comment I had is totally supporting and glad too that number 15 is prevailing with actually going to work to repeal it, but it's basically, this is my family business. It's been, it, it just drives me crazy that we pay good money for, you know, work that exists now and in your business. I mean, it's just, we could say, I don't know, that'll never pass, but boy, for school districts.
The only other one for me is number 10, which is actually recommended do not adopt. So it's very likely it won't come up to the delegate assembly anyway. But if it did come up, that resolution was asking for preschoolers to be counted in the average daily attendance. The resolutions statewide committee said do not adopt on the premise that we have limited funding, so it should be funneled towards K-12. In our case, practically speaking, it would help us if the preschoolers were counted. But more importantly philosophically, I think, you know, preschoolers are, that's where our education is starting and will start. So the fact that these kids don't impact the K-12, I think, should be taken into account. If it were to come up, I would like our delegate to say yes to it if they were not ready to do it.
to do that.
Mrs. Swanson, I think that if it isn't now, it's down to the future, and especially when everybody's all day, we did, I agree, did the whole start of education, so if we are, they're going to be counted.
Mrs. Swanson, are you reading this, that it would kind of like a preschool for typically developing children as well as our special needs children? Because right now, we, you know, we charge tuition for the typically developing peers, and, and we fund, you know, for students with special needs. So how, I don't know how to interpret this when they just talk about preschool.
I think about, you know, I'll speak from staff perspective. Bottom line is on this, the technology required that all students attended three years old, I think is somewhat relevant, this is my opinion, but this is a district here that for whatever reason feels like they want to get general state aid, because they feel like they need to provide that in their community. That's my guess. Common core is required. You're right, we have tuition based students, you know, and then our required students that, you know, have IP's, that's fundamentally different locally as well as where we are real person of the state for the child.
Okay, so right now we aren't getting, I thought we were getting reimbursement from the state for early childhood, so it's not, so this really will, it typically is developing peers. So I, I guess what they want is, they have, they don't have a mandate from the state, so they want the state to fund something that's not mandated, when the state isn't even funding what they have, if they did.
Yes.
So, okay. Any other, any other, well, we should probably get back to how do I do this? Because we need, we really should figure out what we want to do with position 12. Are we agreed that we're going to go against the resolutions committee on that one? And then, and then, and then 10? So I know we're, we've gotten off of 12 and back onto 10, but let's figure out what we want to do with both of those, or separately, let's, and then, so, please, bring this.
I recommend that we take out the discussion. Then we have a vote to go on to the ISP recommendations with respect to the resolutions except for, um, 12 and she's.
Well, 10, but I won't vote on, sorry, I'm answering.
Respect 12, and then have separate vote on 12.
Oh, don't worry about it, separate vote.
We don't have to do a separate vote, we just have to articulate our position. Yes, make a, make a recommendation.
I move that we follow the ISP recommendations with respect to both resolutions except for resolution number 12, which we will oppose.
Second. Second, Mrs. Swanson, and Mr. Roman. Any further discussion?
Just a question for occasion, and if I look at number one, for instance, it's the recommendation of the resolutions committee is what we're following, so that would be the case for number one, we would be then saying we recommend not to adopt, is that correct?
Then any other discussion?
Just, just to point out for the public at home, that there were 15 resolutions submitted. We submitted three of them, and there were only seven resolutions that were recommended as do adopt. Three of them were ours, so pretty good ban.
Okay, so, and thank you, Mrs. Swanson, for putting that out. I regret to do that, and we, we have good track record in terms of influencing the impression, I think, of the ISP, and they understand, we, we do put together some well thought out resolutions, and so thank you for everyone who wrote those and took the time to contribute to those. Having said that, are there any other questions, or are we ready to take a vote?
What's matter?
Is this, this is a voice vote?
It is a voice vote.
Yes, we can still vote.
We'll vote on that one, right?
Yes.
Are you getting motions?
Yes.
Well, until you put motion, oh, you don't have the box to enter the vote.
Mr. Roman didn't make a motion.
Summarizing motion again, I can't, last, I don't have it. I move that we follow the recommendations of the ISP with respect to attendance and positions except for resolution number 12, which we oppose. I don't have the box to give the favor.
Are you on number 16?
Isn't that the recommendation of committee number 12 not to adopt? Not to adopt, that's right.
This legislative stuff gets a little complex sometimes. Does?
Whatever the case, I will guess.
Mr. Matheson should be able to.
In short, we're about to.
Yeah, Mr. Roman and Mrs. Swanson.
There we go.
Sure, and if we were off cruise, so if we were having to find a console, we would move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Loosen, here's, and please go on. Okay. Next. Appointment of the ISP delegate to the delegate assembly. So.
No. Dr. Harris is nominating Mr. Roman. I think you can do that, Dr. Harris. Sorry. Is there anybody who would like to volunteer to do this, really just carry our, our, you know, our message to the floor? And when this, actually, you'll probably get a chance to speak when the do adopt recommendation, that position 12 comes up. So there will be an opportunity to, you know, either be a lot of boo's or a lot of cheers, depending on, you know, the feeling of the, of the community down there. But I would almost guarantee that if you, if you oppose it, you will get a chance to speak. So it would be good experience for somebody to go who hasn't done it before.
I'd be more than happy to volunteer for our schedule of time, turn that delegate assembly time. I would think we should have one of you option to, you know, of our, you resolutions to be overturned.
I haven't done it. Is it on Terry?
Terry, 10:30.
Then I, if you're willing to do it, it's actually a little coaching, important. I left something, would you, would it be necessary to stand up and explain our position on what's our resolution?
Possibly if, possibly if somebody wished to take it off and say do not adopt, then we would have to, you know, argue for it. Now, truth in the advertising, let me just tell you that I will be at that delegate assembly anyway because of being on the board there, and this year I served on the nominating committee. So I will be in that role to, you know, support the nomination. So I will say I'm going to be there anyway, so if people want me to do that, I could do that, but it is a nice experience, it is a good experience, so I need to take it away. And I can sit there and watch one of my colleagues do some projects.
We still have a question, though. I really feel some inflammation needed. There's three resolutions, and what it knows, and we want to do a patient.
I, I agree with that comment, and I would think we would have an opportunity in the future to volunteer for some of our activities.
One thing I was told when I was in preschool, it's not that I volunteered for anything, but why I did that on a serve, I guess I'll, why I did it, so.
Perfect, that would be perfect, that's a perfect.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so, uh, uh, we need somebody to put, to put a motion to, to appoint Mr. Roman to be our delegate to the ISP resolutions assembly.
So.
Second.
Move, but other, Mr. Matheson seconded by Mrs. Swanson. We, we take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, absolutely, thank you very much, Mr. Roman. It'll be a good, it'll be a great experience.
Okay.
Last one, for, 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 Mrs. Inteher. Sorry.
Approval of, our next item is the approval of a counter proposal with Unicom for a community engagement process. I want you to have a vote, man, for her.
I move that we approve of opposing Unicom counter.
Move, Mr. Roman?
I second.
Second, Mr. Paulson. Okay, I know we have had a lot of discussion on this. If you feel the need for further discussion, that's fine, otherwise I just want to go around the table and get your kind of final closing arguments, I guess, with either way or putting it, or just your final thoughts. And, and, you know what, I'm sorry, yes, Dr. Harris, go.
Just briefly, I want to comment and certainly encourage board members to weigh in on this very important topic. We have had several discussion opportunities on this, and to remind board members, as part of the court here, it is one of our goals, and to move forward, to engage the community in conversations about strategic focus of the district for many years to come. Just to point, to point out that this item was on the agenda a month ago. The contract with Unicom has been revised to allow for that month difference. It's basically moved down one month, the amount is the same. We, that was the only change to the contract that we saw a month ago, and is revised here. I would like to state that Mr. Rob Wright, Mr. Dan Burns are here this evening. If the board members do have any questions for clarification, either on the contract or on services, I know they both will be more than willing to address those. And Rob's pointing to Dan, so Dan might be the point person, so, but I know they're both not shy, and certainly want to have to answer any questions of board members. Certainly open it up for comments and discussion.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, since I made it, well, I only, yeah, one thing to add, I agree with what I said on prior occasions, and had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Tom Dial, of the local school district, I think I thought that I, that school district, which is another reference that he listed in their proposal. Todd said he had excellent spirit, and that that board did consider alternatives to hiring an outside consultant for community engagement process, but similar to our school district, they had a one person public relations staff. We have two, and, and he and the, the board just, it's just too much of a tab, of, of a job, in terms of, particularly, they really wanted to get feedback from UNICOM, and Unicom said, has this more collection of, of generating interest, of improving community, for term meetings, and to participate, and praise Unicom's expertise in media and social media, and generate interest, and having people come out and attend. I asked him specifically if he felt that those who participated at the meetings were representative of the community at large. He said, um, they were very much representative, there was people there who, that were children in schools, who are, of course, parents over there, the community leaders, representatives from the business community within the district. He felt that the participants at these meetings were very well representative of the community at large. He did acknowledge at this point the best efforts of facilitating to their, and UNicom to get the entire community out. He is very disappointed that, what he said, were people who were in fact taxed and now attending the meetings. He said it surprised him because the newspaper there was leading the charge in the anti-tax movement down there. He pointed that out, and I pointed out to you earlier, that despite the best efforts of almost any community engagement process, whether it was this process or the terminals process, that there are just some segments of the community who might be able to get out and participate. But with an outfit of UNICOM available to us, we're going to have fantastic prospects of having a wide range of representation at these meetings. With respect to the recommendations that were proposed, found, and facilitated in community engagement, pretty, and that's good, he felt very much that the fact that the priorities and interests of the community at large, and the school board has taken those recommendations apart, is improved in the long-term strategic plans. So he touched base on every single issue that I could recall, that the various prior discussions were, and came up with a very solid response, like, while his recommendations and recommendations of the other records and so forth, are very much in favor of the board in favor of this.
Mr. Ransum?
I've had a lot of questions on this process, as you all know, so I'm not going to go into great depth at any point, at this point, I should say, but I think, you know, I'm strongly supportive of community engagement. I, I think in the big picture, I'm, the reason I've asked all the questions, I'm not getting over the hurdle of getting a clearer identification of what we need to get. And accordingly, I wish I would have been able to see more potential vendors, both for, you know, approach as well as across, and probably in that regard, we'll have to support the, the, this contract.
Mrs. Kacke?
I will be supporting it. I feel we haven't done this in a long time, and it's going to, on several levels, show the community we care about their opinions, and like, if we said we can, because how do we do that? We will, we don't know what community is feeling, and unless they're asked, and they're educated, and they have to be reached, and it's hard to reach out and grab all the different levels of our community. So then, we done, we done, I hired someone, we hired people for many aspects in, in our district, in our lives, and it just makes sense to hire a professional and have it done, done well, and I love that we got recommendations from our districts.
Mr. Giamian?
I support 100% the district goal for staying connected with community, determine its priorities, and foster partnerships, where required for is obviously the process. And so that's, that's the beauty of us being around this table, and we can share our thoughts and our opinions about each of these topics, and while I'm certain that, for me, I wouldn't separate whether it was Unicom or any other outside party, and my position's been pretty clear that I support community engagement, but I feel that the process, by which we're at this, before us tonight, is one that I cannot support. And I've been public on that before, so I can have a senior to the end of the details.
Mr. Paulson?
Process. I've had the experience of doing this type of process with a lot of our school districts. I think it's the right approach. I've gone through this kind of effort personally. I have clients right now asking me about this process that are struggling with similar issues. I see the value. Some of our neighboring districts go through this, confident in my recommendation. There is a cost to this, there's a cost to not doing it. I think this is a phenomenal investment in our unity, and in trust, we want to strengthen with our constituents, and I think it'll be very valuable for future strategic planning for many years.
Mrs. Swanson?
You know, I think we need to approach this, well, given our role as trustees, rather than as managers. You know, a good financial trustee would You know, a good financial trustee would want to know what the owner's wishes were in order to be good stewards of that trust, of the assets of that trust. And we serve the trust of the most important assets of our community, which is our children and their education. And so I think it is incumbent upon us to find out what the wishes of those owners of this system want for their kids. We all have a wide network of friends. I know Mr. Gambiani has suggested we should do community engagement by, it should be something the board does. We all have a wide network of friends, of supporters, of constituents. We wouldn't have been elected without that. But there are, we have a very wide and diverse community, and it would be presumptuous of us to assume that our networks include everybody that are represented by these flags, the diversity of these flags among us, as well as the diversity of income levels in all of that in the district. So, I think some voices are easier to hear. There are voices that are loud, there are voices that are persistent, there are voices that are close to us, there are voices of influence. The trick to a good community engagement is to make sure that we hear the voices that we don't often get to hear. And this process, by having an outside company who has done this before, will allow that to happen. And I fear if we just try to do as we normally do, and we do a pretty good job of trying to be open and insensible, but if we do that, I don't know that we're going to hear other people as much as we could at this sort of a process. And furthermore, it seems to me that we have a core value, which is that we believe in the partnership of the community, and we can only harness the power of that partnership if we get to talk to the community as a whole, and get their talents and input in, as a group, really. So I think more than data we need to get from them in exchange of ideas, I know Mr. Matheson is saying you're not clear about what the output would be. I don't think anybody's exactly clear, except for the fact that it's going to be the collaborative exchange of ideas among community members. And I think that although our community is very diverse, and they're certainly very busy, and that could be part of the reason why it's difficult to get people to come up, we know that they are very supportive of their children and our schools, even if they don't have children themselves. We talked about this this morning in PTA council, not only money, but time and talents, they want to be involved. And, you know, I believe that the community would be very grateful to have an opportunity to sit down and talk, not just with us, but really even with each other, about what they want for schools, and then come and say, oh, now, now we know because we've heard from people that are different from us, and here's a more powerful idea than anyone could come up with on their own. So I very much support the process. I support the hiring of an outside firm, because I don't think we have the resources or the skills, quite frankly, to make that kind of conversation happen. And it seems to me, like, if community engagement subcommittee, Jim and Brad, I think you have experience with this firm, you've had experience with this firm, you've talked to board members in the two neighborhoods that I've been happy with, and you've talked now to another board member. I think that at some point, we could say, you know, we can approve this contract, and some of the implementation of it can be worked out as we go along. As I read the contract, they would agree to assist us in what we want to do. And that implementation, you know, if there are concerns about exactly what the, who the people are that are invited, or on the leadership team, that can be worked out as we go. So I guess, I'm definitely supporting the process myself, but I'm just going to straight up ask for Mr. Matheson, your vote, Mr. Gambiani, your vote, to think about it that way, and if there are any things that can be changed in the wording of the charge that would make you more comfortable, as to what the output would be, or, it's a contract, so I don't want to mess with that, but, you know, there's, the intention I understand from all the focus groups that they've done is to get a cross-section of the community. So if that needs to be actually spelled out, maybe there's a way to do that. So I would ask, once again, to say, please come along and support this, because I think it makes it so much more powerful in the community if they know that the board members are supporting it. You know, you can say you support the process, and that's great, and you support the concept, and that's great. But I think that actually saying, yes, we support this process, is much more helpful in terms of getting the people that we know to come as well as those who are connected further out. That would be my positioning and my plea, really.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. I also intend to support the proposal. We've got a goal of community engagement placed on our select and our superintendent this year. And I think, you know, it is our vision that this is a very important thing to do. We also put money in the budget for the anticipation of hiring a consultant to do it. It has become clear to me, through the process that I've read about, through the information that our community engagement committee has provided, staff members, as well as our two board members who are on the committee, that staff and that committee feel most comfortable that we will achieve the best result possible by doing this with an outside vendor, and by doing it with Unicom. So I feel that this is a value decision. And I think if we, if staff does not feel that they can achieve the same results, the same level of quality on their own, because of the demands, especially because of the demands at their time, I think we're doing ourselves in disservice and wasting money in terms of our own internal resources by trying to do something that we already have a very good sound feeling that we don't really have time and our schedules to do well. And so, for that reason, I think staff has made a very sound recommendation. I see nothing wrong with it. I appreciate all the extra work that was done to answer the questions that were brought before us, and all the extra effort that Mr. Roman, and Mr. Paulson, and our staff, Mrs. Black, and our decker members, and others who have worked on it, have put into this. Having said that, it looks like the vote may be as low as five-two, so I will ask that those of you who may oppose this with your vote, as we enter the process, which I expect that we will, that you support the effort both publicly and privately. Because that is the only way we will achieve the best possible results and get our value for the money you've built, we will be expending. So I ask that, I'm sure you'll be asked for input, you'll be asked for input for names and people. You might be asked to participate in the process, and I ask that, no matter what your position is tonight at this vote, that you participate fully and support the process, because I think your wishes may be served, as well as the wishes of the collective by doing this. So I think we're ready to take it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matheson. You know, I think that, you know, confusing a little bit my position. My position is that, very clearly, I support the process, that we need the engagement to, or whatever the community has to say. I have to say that I prefer not to vote on anything when I'm more or less looking on one vendor, okay? I want to, because I know this field, I want to have five people tell me the best way to vote, okay? That's where I'm coming from, and that's what's confusing me. And I will also make it clear that if this passes five-two, four-three, one-six, I don't care, I will be supportive of this. As I would on anything we do, as a board. So, you know, once we make that decision, I'm fully supportive of it. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking at this anything more, and I guess I could say, if we ever have an opportunity to hire another consultant, I want to see more than one, or two. Yeah, you know, I, this is a field I don't want to allow, and I understand that, so I'll definitely make it clear.
In my respect to your opinion on it, Mr. Matheson, and I appreciate your acknowledging that equal support, the other. I guess I'm more comfortable that I know that our community looked at more than one vendor, and that's okay with me. But I understand that, you know, the nature of your work, that you would want to have that in certainly, as we come to selecting other vendors. I'm sure you'll have that opportunity, but I definitely appreciate that you'll be fully supportive of the process publicly and publicly along the way, because that will make it meaningful. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, then, Mrs. Sandy, you have the vote, so this, and board members, go ahead and ask.
Mr. Roman.
Yes.
Mr. Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani.
No.
Mr. Matheson.
No.
Mrs. Patkill.
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar.
Yes. Most of the rest is five-two. Next, asking approval of the board charters for community engagement. Okay, Dr. Gerson, what's your comment briefly?
Yes, as part of the process of working with Unicom for community engagement, one of the most important things they ask us to do is to come up with a board chart. And, you know, the development, or the community engagement committee, Mr. Roman and Mr. Paulson have drafted this. I know board members have seen drafts of this, and have weighed in on it. I'll certainly turn it over to Mr. Roman or Mr. Paulson for further comment on this. You know, the board chart here does lay out some of the specifics and input on what we would like to see, and what the intent is as we move forward and reach out to the community, and say, and ask them for, you know, input to the board on a strategic focus moving forward in multiple areas in our functions and schools. Mr. Roman, you have a comment, and I thought you would.
For words, I circulated the draft of this chart several weeks ago, and then I received comments and suggested edits from several members of the board. And I had the opportunity to compare the comments of the board, and then of Mr. Matheson, like the community, and all of the others. So those comments plus the suggested edits, and I've seen from other members of the board. You can have the product in front of you. If I could, I would just go through and try to emphasize why they have selected certain words that appear between this chart. First of all, you see that the board chart is the community, the community engagement team, to create a facilitated team, that provides twelve, fifteen members, and setting a facilitated community committee. I think Mr. Paulson and I, as well as the staff, shall endeavor to try hard and earnest and invest this effort to place members of the facilitated team, residents of the community, to the district, to the district of the community. So we have that chart, it's just going to be our responsibility. So, we have that chart, it's just going to be our responsibility. And this Swanson, working on a facilitated team, shall specifically co-chair the district team of the parent community members, and prioritize the individual, and control the school, so that we can co-chair the facilitator team. And then the facilitated team is charged to endeavor to work hard in terms of this effort to recruit the coalition, which is an alliance of folks with a work of mind action that represents the whole community. And after the coalition gathers, it is to tender the board, both facilitating teams to tender to the board recommendations, and here's that related elements of a long-term comprehensive strategic plan that will promote the improvement of performance of the district, both academically and meaningfully, the phrase, and social, emotional behavior, and last seven years, all important, with advancement, march over, and academic and social. And then you'll see the elements of the charge that the coalition is to do under the direction of the facilitated team. And consistent with the concerns raised by Mr. Matheson, what we don't want to have happen is to have this coalition come up with a rate of regulations to improve student performance and academics and social emotional behavior, without any consideration of the other challenges that we have, as a result, in capital projects, or capital needs, operational needs, and certain other fiscal needs. So, we just cannot come up with a wish list. It must be a wish list that will include the other challenges that we face, and that's specifically the charge. And as I mentioned here, facilitating team and community engagement committee, this process is completed, the tender recommendations, and I want to emphasize the word recommendations. These are not directives that we can put into, and they are recommendations that we can either accept or reject. If we feel for one reason, or there's some basis or weakness to it, which is not necessarily the goal of the community, that seems to be an item on the agenda of special interest to it, and not a, that's a full recommendation, you know, we're not committed to it, so we are to tend to us to recommendations, and it's up to us to decide whether we accept them or not. So, that's the thinking that I have to find in the chart. I have to say that I got the comments and edits from various members of the board, first I thought, maybe the challenges are kind of multiple and difficult, but I sat down, wasn't that hard, it was hard, the recommendations were suggested edits and comments for multiple and rather easily, and, or I think, addressing the concerns that are raised, the legitimate concerns that are raised, and especially we have. So, that's the back on the front.
Well, first off, thank you to Mr. Roman, it's always been a big, entire term of crap language helps me out a lot. Just to underscore the recommendation piece, I know that was one of the discussions, where we're going, was the board going to get filed into the recommendation? I did a little research, and I think, well, our board policy two point one five, which talks about committees, specifically at half court committees, which is what the community engagement committee is, says specifically that the role of such committee will be to identify problems, conduct studies, and provide recommendations that aid the board in its decision-making on specific issues. So, I think that concern that we're going to be handcuffed to the recommendations of the committee, or the community members who participate, were protected by the nature of our own policy, which operates how this committee's going to work. So, I'm comfortable in the chart, as well as the policy that, what we're going to get in the end, in whatever format, whatever medium it becomes, it's going to be a piece that we can consider in all other decisions.
Any other comments?
I have one. Basically, I think, again, I'm hearing a clarification, the word recommendation, that's troubling me along the way, and I sent an email, I thought everyone got it, but, you know, the wording that's in the, in my school board journal, which said, gather current accurate and consistent information that reflects perceptions and priorities of the challenges of the community. You know, that, to me, is what we're trying to accomplish, not get recommendations, similar to what you just quoted on two point, what was that?
One five.
One five, thank you. You know, that, again, I didn't hear the word recommendation, I think it was gathering facts, and, you know, did it say recommendation? It did, I'm sorry, I removed my comments about two point one five. But that's my only comment about this, again, I'm a little bit reluctant with recommendations, only because I think, I don't want to have to try and defend one. I understand the process, and by this explanation, in this, we really want to evaluate the results, you know, that's how I would go here.
I was, I'm sorry, Mrs. Swanson, I was actually looking for the words, and I had the document up in front of me, so I was not paying attention to your line there.
Well, a couple of comments. I think it is great that we are starting to think of the IASB as a resource to go to when it comes to policies and stuff, and I mean that sincerely, I think that is great. But I do want to clarify that there is more to the concept of community engagement as IASB is well not their initiative than gathering data. It is all about collaborative, gathering data is one element. One element is providing information to the community, the second level is gathering data, the third level is collaborative, problem-solving, decision-making, that sort of thing. And you can read that in several instances in their forty-six page document that you carried, carried, you know, but that is really the ultimate goal, is what IASB sees as community engagement. So, I think that that goes along a little bit more with what the processes that we're talking about. If I could offer a suggestion to perhaps make Mr. Matheson more comfortable, in the past, we have used the wording advisory-only recommendations. It is redundant, but it, I think it has the element of clarifying right up front what those recommendations are going to be, and it's always been successful in the past, the community has understood the boundaries, you know, they get it that we're the ones that have the vote, but we're also the ones that need to be, you know, responsive to what they tell us. So, that's sort of the two-way promise between the community. So, I don't know if that would help the board soften it up even more, you could say, instead of recommendations, you could say collaborative advisory ideas, and that would be even softer. But in the long run, I think it will, it will grow out to be the same thing, and I don't have as much fear about being put into the box, but I do believe there are ways that would really change things.
Just to respond that briefly, I think, again, we're giving this mission to a group of people that I don't know who they are yet, just fifteen or whatever number of people, so the more we can be clear that these advisory that, I like that, I, you know, that's really what their mission is, is to, and if that, I'll clarify for anyone that looks at it and comes to remember that.
Perhaps I've been suggesting you modify the last paragraph on the first page, where it says, "Contribution of the community engagement process, the community engagement committee, and the facilitating team shall present advisory-only recommendations to the board regarding," and it lists like four points, should we just insert the two words, advisory-only?
Maybe just present their items? I don't know, I just, I hate to be done with this. Whatever.
Clarity's okay, and that's okay, and that facilitating team will need that clarity, because it will come up when we get those twelve, fifteen people at the table. I know, I've experienced that in the past, and we will, we'll have to repeatedly, Mr. Paulson, Mr. Roman, when we start those conversations, make sure that that group, you know, knows that, and will emphasize advisory element. I think that's a good solution here, based on some of the conversation, the rest of the board's prepared.
All right. Okay.
I will insert words advisory-only.
Yes. All right, so then we need a, if there are no other suggested wording changes, Alice.
One other quick comments, I just want to, you know, if the board does approve this chart as amended, I would, you know, we will be reaching out and asking all board members for recommendations, you know, staff has started the list, however, we're going to have to move pretty quickly here over the next couple of weeks to generate that list of individuals that we want to reach out to. We want to make sure that this facilitating team, very beginning, is that meets that representative sample that we've talked about from the last three meetings from the beginning. So, I would encourage board members to let myself, or Mr. Roman, or Mr. Paulson know if you have ideas we need, because not everybody may accept that, because there will be some meeting responsibilities up, and we're going to have to try to put together that team here in the next couple of weeks, as we look forward.
Clarification, will we have an opportunity to see what the mix of that team is?
The committee is meeting on Friday, and we're going to start to work on that list. Certainly, it's not going to be a secret, I mean, I would anticipate having a draft of that at the, by the summer board meeting, and if not, even prior to that, and we need to, and we have to reach out to those individuals and ask them, a lot of them have no idea that they're even, you know, might be considered for a role like this. So, it may take some conversation on my behalf, as well as some board members, to help them understand what we're asking to do as well.
I'd just like to make a comment on the subject matter here, it says approval of a board charge for community engagement, and parentheses, subject to approval of UNICOM contract, closed parentheses. For me, though I voted no on the previous action item, I believe that this document, Jim, excellent job, and Brad, is still a key document, whether we were going to do this with an outside service or not, so I don't want to have any mixed, I wouldn't, you know, confuse anybody about my stance here, that I support this document, because it's key whether we were going to do this internally or externally, and hats off to Mr. Roman, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Ms. Gaby Yannan. Mr. Paulson?
May I make a motion that we approve the board charge as amended for community engagement process?
Senator?
I say.
Mr. Matheson says, Mr. Paulson approves, I think we can do the question. Oh, okay. Okay, Mrs. Senator, we go.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Patkill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gaby Yannan?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes, motion passes, thank you very much.
That's the end of our action hours. Okay, now we can better all report from the enrollment team, any ideas?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to update the board on a very important committee work that's been going on with chaired by district staff, and that is the enrollment committee. One of the responsibilities I had last year in my performance goals was to come up with a process to how we would consistently evaluate our enrollment trends, using Cassandra, updated information, as well as our current data, as well as community information about where our enrollment stands, and where we project things, not only in the short term, but also in the long term. And staff has put together a group in the community, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley and Mrs. Boyakano, and they chaired this committee of staff and community members, and I'm going to let them talk about the conversations they had, as well as the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Board members, you do have a copy of this, you can bring it forward, or send this PowerPoint if you'd like, otherwise, listen well.
As Dr. Harris mentioned, the intent of this study was to fulfill both board and superintendent goals from the previous year. And the superintendent did ask myself and Mr. Farley to pull together an advisory committee that would include staff, parents, and various stakeholders throughout the community, and that would evaluate various pieces of data and provide any recommendations, if necessary, to the superintendent for review as it relates to enrollment in our district. The main piece of information that we looked at was, was the 2013 Caster Report, which was also a goal that the board completed last year, to update the 2008 report that reviews population and housing dynamics in our community, analyzes recent enrollment patterns, and also makes enrollment projections. You have a list in front of you as well, I know the font type is a little bit small on the screen, but our committee was comprised of various staff from several of our buildings, building leaders, one of which who is still here tonight, thank you, Dr. Torina for staying. Dr. Torina served on our committee as well, along with several parents and non-parents in the district, but we really wanted to make sure that we had a good representation of our community, both from north side and south side, elementary through high school level parents. So, what did the committee do? We met twice, and we reviewed the 2013 Caster Report and enrollment projections. If you recall, from the Caster Report, which I will mention, that every person on our committee did read the hundred-and-eight page report, so we were very excited about that. But in the enrollment report, there were three series of enrollment projections, we had series A, B, and C. A was kind of a projection that was on the more conservative side, series B was what Dr. Caster thought would probably happen, and series C was a generous assumption of what he anticipated for enrollment. We evaluated actual student enrollment data and trends. We looked at specifically, when we talk about actual data, our ten-day enrollment at the beginning of the school year, we talked about how, understanding the difference between capacity and capacity as it relates to scheduling, and how that is very different at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level. Joian also came in to our second meeting and talked to our committee about the distribution of special education programs across the district, and was one of the questions of the committee. When we started looking at some numbers, we knew that depending on what school that they had familiarity with, they knew that there might be more special education programs and services offered at a particular building versus others. So, I wanted to understand how that distribution occurs, why we don't have equal distribution of those programs across all of our buildings, et cetera. So, Joian came in and gave that presentation, we appreciated that. And then we finally identified recommendations for the superintendent. Bill and I like to, oh, okay. Bill and I like to say we don't think we could have thrown one more piece of paper at this committee, they looked at every single piece of data as it relates to enrollment that we could possibly give them. Key pieces of data they considered were the 2013 Caster Report, again, ten-day student enrollment, total number of special education classrooms and students by building, so we broke it down for them, every single program, and number of classrooms, and number of students by building. We looked at building capacity, we looked at the migration of transfer, in transfer of kindergarten to first grade students. One of the questions the committee had was, well, do our first grade numbers tend to jump because maybe we're getting some students who are attending kindergarten in the private sector, and maybe that are coming to us in the first grade? Does that have any effect on enrollment? We looked at current MLS listings for the community, and looked at the active and off-market homeless, provided by a local realtor, and had a conversation with the local realtor as well about, which was confirmed by our board expert, Joian Patkill, that a lot of the homes in our community are being sold by empty nesters and being purchased by growing families in the community, very much like myself, so, and just, you know, had a kind of conversation about how that might impact in our enrollment and just another consideration. And then we also looked at a report from the city of Wheaton, the city of Warrenville's report was very similar, but the one we provided to our committee was from the city of Wheaton, that talked about the estimated population for dwelling, estimated population for dwelling unit report, and looked at, okay, if your, if your home is X number of bedrooms, you're more, you're likely to have X number of individuals living in that home. So, we looked at all of those key pieces of information and came to the final recommendations, which Mr. Farley will.
Thank you very much. The committee did come up with some recommendations that we want to run through quickly. One thing we said at the onset that this committee would probably be an ongoing committee, and they felt, they reaffirmed the fact that they felt that the committee should meet every year, and go through this type of process, and review what's happening as enrollment goes in the district, so that was more of a reaffirmation than maybe a recommendation, but felt that was very important. We didn't, we didn't set them up on this, this came from, from community, community members, that they felt the community engagement process had a decent end, and how it impacted the expectations from the community for the facilities and programming through our community engagement process, which they were, was a discussion. They found that evaluation and audit of each building's usage of space on a regular basis was important, and how, you know, taking a look at all of our buildings and how we're using space, and obviously that'll differ by level, but take a look at some type of audit, you know, each year, and take a look at how this, the building spaces being used. Obviously, there was that worth of some of the questions that they raised. The impact of location, you know, they wanted us to keep a keen eye, obviously, as I rose to the growth of the question that were raised, you know, taking a look at kindergarten, our special ed programs, our ELL, and then the, you know, choice, and obviously, that's still a TPD with, where choice is going to go in the next few years, as a work of BSA, and that goes, so that may go away on its own accord, but choice and the progressive transfer, which is a new term, process, the district has to allow children to change where they go to school. Obviously, they wanted us to keep an eye on what they call the hotspots, the schools that were currently in the C range, and we've got a list behind here of those schools that have fallen into that C range, I should have mentioned, Newsbrook is one that's mentioned, it's not in the C range yet, but it's, Brian's getting pretty full over there, and, you know, so we wanted to keep an eye on that, have a look at that as well. And you can see the schools that are, you know, that are ones that they felt were watching. I would say, again, Joian came through, figured out, explained it, evaluating the distribution of special education programs throughout the district, and how we can utilize effective space for those programs, and how it impacts different schools based on, you know, going back to that audit about what's available, and what class size, it's obviously different programs at different space needs, and how that's impacted as well. Thought it was important to maintain an advanced partnership with the groups that listed here, private preschools, K D's in Park District, there was one staff member that works for the Park District, that he's kind of seeing the happen flow with younger students that are older swimming programs in the district, and always gone through, had a big rule, and then it kind of, you know, went down quite a bit, and now we're starting to see that moving again, so, just an example from that as well. And good relationship with realtors, you better be making friends. Just to kind of get an gauge for what's going on in the community as far as housing turnover, the, probably the one thing we heard, a lot of them heard from the committee, that there was a concern that Caster Report really didn't take into account the, while it says it did, they were very concerned about the impact that this turnover in housing was going to have. Obviously, when the economy went downhill, particularly in 2008, and people weren't able to get the value of to get the value of the home, they once thought they had a lot of folks chose to stay put. There was a certain amount of those empty nesters who stayed put or turning around and putting out, as I mentioned, and turning houses in our data where we're seeing families come in. So again, as someone reaffirmed in the couple of conversations that we had as well, but there was a concern that that turnover given our community could be far greater than the Castor had projected. One last thing on the housing market, we did go through and look at some of the housing starts that are out there in the community right now. As briefly mentioned earlier, the Combe Farm, it's 45 homes. On the south side, we've got, you know, the Legends still has 35 homes to be built out. Amberwood on Orchard Road has got some homes that are under construction to be built in there. So keep an eye on those as well, as well as some other ones that recently are new. Some of you have a fellow family that's going to sell some property, or some Sandburg School over 20 homes in there. So we're starting to see some of these things pop. There's still, you know, I'm talking to some of the builders that are out there, they're coming back in, you know, they used to be building out in Oswego, Church Road, and building housing out there. They're now looking at established communities that have, you know, that are appealing to younger families, and while it's not affordable housing, it falls somewhere in the $300,000 range, or maybe affordable to close to $300,000, $900,000, a lot of homes these are trying to build in the community that the economy is much better, they're a little bit cheaper, or even less expensive ones. So, you know, we're seeing those starting to pop up where there's space out in the district. We've got the North Street, we've got six homes in. So we're starting to see more and more of these parents open up and housing going in. So we'll continue to monitor that as well. Again, some of this was probably related to some folks' specific experience with their own school, was trying to see enrollment, and the district tried and allowed and encouraged people to enroll their students. Some of the schools, I think this was Pleasant Mill here, was concerned how the enrollment really tends to have a, I hit it on late August in, or after Labor Day, and all of a sudden, the district's sports day, they had FTE, and we had to split classes, and that's obviously traumatic for children and parents from time to time. So they were wanting us to try and encourage those folks to get out, so. They wanted us to obviously to use, utilize social media, and we did try and encourage. We knew you had, you know, a lot of the first-type schools working on the apartment license to try and encourage and move on their enrollment on site to try and get those numbers, you know, folks enrolling, which are going into enrollment this year. So in summary, there is no immediate action required from the district level. Obviously, we're going to continue to monitor what's going on out there, and I think there's some other housing services that works on the north side that are going to have, we're going to have to keep a very close eye on and make sure that we're prepared if they do come. Again, that's really the summary statement there, as an advisory and recommendation to the superintendent and staff, is just to continue to monitor that and reconvene with the committee next year and see what, a lot can change very quickly, I guess. So with that, I'll take questions.
There you go, question. Real quickly, so that I, you know, the community knows, to people like me know, Castor, who's that?
I'm sorry. Dr. Castor is a demographer from the University of North Carolina, does a lot of work in the area with school districts, doing multi-year study to look at enrollment patterns. As I mentioned, he gives you, I think he's a demographer, every year range, so they've got the bases covered, but they, Dr. Castor has done demographic studies in the district for the last 12 or 15 years, I believe, and so this is just an update of his most recent 2008 report.
And then as a follow-up to that, what is the C, I think it's a C projection, and what is the rating system, and is C threatening, and what does that mean?
C is really, if all the variables come into place, what he expects to do, the highest high enrollment count in the school, or that with all the variables that are taken into account, which include turnover, new housing, all of that, he works with the local community, and he goes to, he goes to Warrenville, talks to the community development folks, tries to find out what's in the works, what's happening with real estate, all, will take all those factors into account, and the C is basically the high side of what he thinks the enrollment in a given school will be, and he does that for every school, and he does, you know, he does an overall district look as well.
It doesn't necessarily mean the building's overcrowded at this point. It simply means, based on what the current enrollment is, here's what, you know, it's the most, C is the most aggressive growth. In other words, he says in there, not exceed that, in his opinion.
And so on my side, what you're saying on this report is that we don't have any buildings that are threatening to be, that enrollment problem at this point?
Not at this point. That's exactly what, you know, looking at all the information, however, there are some triggers here we have to watch carefully. And here from now, if we reconvene and we look at it, we might, and what this really boils down to is two things. It's either facility space, or it's boundary discussions. Now, I mean, that's really, if, that's what we change. At this time, there is no need for that. That's, that's good news, okay? However, you know, when I, my first year here, I inherited the situation that was not fun, let's put it that way, and it was very challenging, it had to be dealt with, and then we had to try to find a solution because we had school, we had enrollment issues at the middle school level, and we had space in one building, we didn't have any other, and we had to make some changes, and it was a very challenging, you know, situation. We want to avoid that, and we want to get out in front of it. If we anticipate that there is situations where they're going to occur, we either have to do one of two things. We either have to look for mobile classrooms, we have to make, add an addition to the building, or we have to change boundaries. And that's why facilities, public relations, you know, it's a range of options here, and I'd rather be prepared way in advance for this type of conversation, so at the end of the month.
And I think it's important, again, to reference, I see doesn't necessarily mean we have a building space issue. It can in some certain instances, if Dr. Torina starts getting into his C range, we're going to have some, some facility-related issue. Other schools may be able to absorb the C level of enrollment, but again, we have to continue to monitor what's going on with some of these housing. You know, obviously, the Combe Farm, I think it's Maplewood is the name of it as now, but I think that's 45 homes that are going into Pleasant Mill and Leedore, so obviously that's, you know, we're going to have to keep an eye on that. And if more move into that area, or Franklin is the school Dr. Harris mentioned, if we get anything into that area, you know, the boundary change work, it's almost following to the, to the student, what we thought we'd see happen, and that migration has worked very well. But again, if we get more in there and they start creeping forward to C, that's going to be, you know, something we're going to have to look at again, so.
The good news is, at this point, there's no need for that type of change. However, we need to make sure we stand top, and especially that North Geneva Road corridor, as was mentioned, as well as a few other possibilities.
Great, thank you so much. And Dr. Harris, as one who kind of followed up to this presentation, I'm getting the feeling here that we both had a kind of a permanent enrollment committee, superintendent committee, and that order committee that we have to, you know, appoint or anything, but. Great, thank you so much, and, I know, I know the Castor Report was distributed to us, and I know if Mr. Paulson and Mr. Madison, sorry, I didn't give them a copy, but.
It's online.
Is it online?
Hear that, or we can get your print copy. It is online. It's on the website.
Next, we have bird reports, the multi-financial reports, and the Freedom of Information Act report. Are there questions on either of those reports from board members?
The financial committee one, you know, take a look at it if you have questions or comments, or something else you'd like to see. Mrs. Watson and I, we're going to have to address those for modification in the future.
Quickly, just want to thank the committee for the new format, the more pertinent, I think, for my own eyes.
Thank you. Reports from, many reports from board members, facilities, please.
Joanne, you want to do it?
Yeah, I'll start.
I'll start, yeah, I'll fill in the blanks. The Facility Planning Committee with Mrs. Cockle and I, we got the staff on the 30th of October. It was a pretty robust meeting, I'll say that. That was my first experience. I think, did you were on that committee last year or the last two years prior? So it was a eye-popping for me, quite frankly, but it was a very comprehensive meeting and a very productive meeting, and it got me up to speed very quickly. Just briefly, because we're going to be dense here in about two, three minutes, we did have a presentation and an update from Performance Services. I think the public knows we use this organization to help us do some performance contract work, which that was approved several, several years ago, but they gave us an update on a couple initiatives. One was the June 2012 project, and that was valued 1.44 billion dollars, and that project was completed on time and successfully, and we enjoyed about $200,000 in rebates as a result of that process that we engaged Performance Services in. They, there was a second project that was a June 2013 project. It was a smaller amount, $400,000 project, completed on time, and we enjoyed, the district enjoyed a rebate of a little more of $100,000 in savings, if you will, or in rebates. Additionally, some of the benefits that will be ongoing to the district are energy savings related, and specifically as a result, that Project One effort, the district now enjoys about $28,000 per year in energy savings through the effort of that performance contract. So clearly, the goals and objectives of that relationship with that firm and the identified projects with each facility are paying dividends to the district. It heads off to all the staff, people who have put the work in to make that happen. Again, they, this is an ongoing process, and they provided, our staff did, along with Performance Services, a very lengthy update, and what they call the improvement list, and it identifies every facility in the district, except for Hubble, which is newer, and the SSC, and Jefferson, which is another matter that we have to take offline from a facility standpoint, but all the other buildings were included in this improvement list, as they called it, as of October 30th, and I won't go through it because it's very detailed, quite frankly, it's extremely detailed. I don't even have printers this big, but at the net-net, they came up with a total dollar figure of items that have to just be, we have to be aware of, and we have to figure out how we are going to approach this, but the total value was about $6.4 million of identifiable improvements, if you will, through those buildings that are just attributed to. And they categorize these, which is really helpful, it's a high median low, and so at the end of the day, we, as facilities, committee members, along with staff, have to get great guidance from them, and we're going to have to pick these things off one at a time, budget allowing, obviously, but clearly a great snapshot of where we are. We need to obviously make sure these buildings are being maintained for a lot of things. Most of these things are really just helping the environment and the learning situations for the students, which are paying, again, great dividends to make the learning environment much better than what it was before. So there's a lot more detail, but I think in general, the decisions that this board made, the recommendations that have been brought to us by staff with this particular customer vendor, Performance Services, seem to be, we're recognizing reality of what the expectations were and then some. So again, I learned a lot in that hour and a half, two hour that day, and I'm excited to work with Joanne and staff and continue the ball rolling as we try to identify and pick off the most high, the highest priorities and see how we financially can accommodate that, obviously, that's the net effect. Joanne, you have something?
No, that was a great summary. The only thing I would add is, even before we started Performance Services, Tom and Colin did a fabulous job with their big spreadsheets of everything, and it really, really, it's almost can be overwhelming, you know, all the buildings and the needs and the age that they just, and there's a lot of things that keep up them. And, but it's, it was more consolidated with Performance Services, and their high median low really does identify it, and it just, you know, started knocking them off in 2012. Was great this year, high priorities with South, and their boiler, you can take care of. We learned a lot, we had a lot of discussions about a new event, and a poor person who lived next to it, and they're being blown right on, and high humidity problems, and that there's nine schools that town, they're not effective, and Baker Cars will be obsolete by 2015, so, I mean, that is a big deal to address those. What else? Love with rebates, that is absolutely fabulous. Really, it's, like you said, it's to improve the learning environment and move air, circulation of air is a big thing, and where did they quit? You know how we have attic fans in our homes? Well, they, Franklin and Lowell are getting something like, they're getting it or got it?
Got it.
Got it, okay, yeah. And that helps with CO2 levels, so kids can, you know, be more alert, so it is exciting to have a system, and have it organized, and have to work with Performance Services.
The only thing I would add to that, a lot of the recommendations and different things there are related to HVAC controls, unit air quality, aesthetic environments, and there's obviously energy connections there based on having effective equipment and monitoring and being able to control. Our staff is so efficient, and they actually said it that day, our staff, Tom and Colin, and our building managers here at the high school level are so good at managing that stuff, that, you know, the only energy savings that are left is on outdated, outdated equipment. And we have such a hot pot of scenarios across our buildings that there would be a huge advantage in energy savings, and that's where some of that conversation's around. You know, just a prerequisite for the finance committee members here, one of, the price tag is something we're going to discuss, one of those ways to do that, which is just kind of a preview of maybe an agenda in the near future, is looking at how we might restructure our debt. Our board members remember that conversation. We know we have some debt out there. If we restructure it, then we might be able to realize some debt service there. It's just an idea on how to do some of this through some restructuring, because we do have some unique debt scenarios, and I want to get into that tonight. That's the agenda, and Bill and I have been talking with the PM and the op, and we'll be bringing more information about that. So we're probably working together with finance as well as facilities as we move forward to hopefully address some of these things and bring recommendations to the board.
Despite the time, I feel obligated to comment on this subject. First off, thank you for the update on that. Because one thing I'm interested in with all the talk of technology and 21st century burning, those issues that we, we've talked about, our energy and deferred maintenance and those kinds of issues, there's a whole other perspective that I think will come up through this community engagement process potentially, education, please, about how will the builders support the programs we offer, the types of programs we want to be able to offer in the future. So it's a different lens, we're going to probably get into a conversation on, as it relates to our community in the future.
I think I can add to this, Dr. Harris, that we also, you also gave the Performance Services another charge, if you want to comment on that.
Well, just Jefferson, obviously, we, they had not even been in that building because we were at another strategy a year ago, and so therefore we did ask them, which they are in the process of right now, they are going to do an evaluation of that building to see, you know, and take a look at the lighting, the HVAC, the boiler, and all those six, just to have an idea of what, because they had not been in that building, we'd asked them not to, but we will look at that as well. That would be on the agenda coming up as well, so it is something we'll have to consider, you know, in our conversations if we choose to do something.
I'm just delighted that there's another board member getting immersed in performance contract. Welcome to the call today. Just understand, the 6.4 is dealing with, what, again, energy, or it's not dealing with growth, it's not dealing with. with growth, it's not dealing, you know, what's the primary hand, secondarily, after explaining that, what's the budget for this kind of project?
There is no budget currently for these types, these are capital expenses, and we're, that's why we're going to have conversations about how we might be able to address that. However, we can get your copies, those sheets are extensive, that'd probably be the best way, if you'd like, but basically, it's HVAC, controls, unit vents, some, oh, there is a couple of rookie situations, those are very, those are my, that's, it's critical, as I would call them, the issues that are sitting out there, high need, critical issues to deal with classroom environment, as well as, you know, energy related connections to boilers, boiler upgrades.
Energy and human comfort.
Jim, I know how much you are, I know how much you love numbers, being an auditor, so just go simply, this is pretty, pretty powerful information. Of that 6.4 million, 3.6 is within three buildings, Weath North, Johnson, and Emerson. So, 83% of that total identified list that we have here of improvements is allocated to three facilities.
Well, certainly, add detail information, anything that would come to the board level, we will have detail and information behind all that.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. All, all the committee members do a fabulous job, and they keep us up to date, going well, and I know, you know, as you expressed, the tie in between finance and facilities and academics is all, is all there, so I'm really happy that we have that committee structure, and that we have such good people to put on the committee, so we, I appreciate that. Finance committee, where we're from, at the budget, at the levy discussion, is there anything, and then you had, is there anything else supporting the finance committee? Okay, are there any other board members? Mr. Paulson?
Yes, as Vice President, I'm also the learning.
Training officer.
Training officer for the board. I'm going to be developing a board development plan so that we can qualify for the rest of the school board.
Government.
Government's award, we were awarded two years ago, and we can get this together, which might get awarded to the next Paul Baker, if you have any idea, so. Just to get a hold of us, I'm going to be watching.
Are there any other announcements? I just want to just, again, say thanks for watching today, it was fabulous, thank you for all, all you do, it was just a great day for me, and for schools, and one different for the next in terms of presentation, but all fabulous. Very proud of our district for doing that. Okay, our next regular meeting will be December 11th at Washington Elementary School. Are there further comments on non-agenda items? There's one, Jerry Musler, Jerry, our GCA services. The whole, I need to be ready before you take the microphone, and I lost it, I'm going to do that. The mic is a little, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Oh, public commentary report to the board, it's important, is the board's policy not to take action on items until time has been taken together, commissioned, and discussed all options. Lack of action is not my lack of interest in these issues. We ask you to confine your options to three minutes, and see if you can present the address, and.
Okay. My name is Jerry Musler, AM, like America, the SSLDR. I'm an employee of SEI, Service and Cores International Union, Local One, R I S 111, East, Riker Drive, Chicago, Z 60601. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk on the opposite side of the type of the contracts you just talked about. You just talked about contracts, big, big dollars, it's a very educated, honey-bait people. I'm here to talk about the people that are outsourced, that are on the outside of that, the people that like the historians that take care of the facilities, working for GCA. They're really dedicated people, they have 85 employees in this district, many of them work the year off, students in the schools here. The way they have been treated by this district the past five years is not very good. For the past, past five years, you have not delivered the contract to GCA to give them any raises at all, which in fact, it gives them a kind of pay for five years in a row by kind of keeping up with the cost of living. This year, you want to start further. In the R I P, you did not require them to have health insurance with the people. So, GSA has dropped, in the day that we're talking about the ACA, to have everybody covered. This district, without the R I P, it did not require GCA to give that. So, now these people, 60% of them, just over 50, the individuals had health insurance last year, in fact, the general, they're not going to have it, they're not going to have it because it was not in the R I P. So, what I'd like to ask you is why the R I P dropped that? I'd also like to ask, how can it be reinstated? And third, I'd like to ask you, who can we go for, or go to to get the answers? Thank you.
To answer the one question, the staff will certainly be able to follow up with you, Mr. Farley, and myself, we've had conversations with GCA staff, and we certainly can have that conversation, we will be in contact. We have a phone number here, yeah.
We have a phone number?
We have a phone number, we will be in contact, okay? Thank you.
We do have a different closed session tonight, for the analysis of possible action, our personnel, and purchase or lease of real property. So, we know the action taking after closed. So, I'll entertain more if you do your terms. Who's that, Mr. Paulson, and then Mr. Swanson, Mr. Semen, and the other board members?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacquiao?
Yes.
Mr. Giamiani?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
No, not.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
This is your job.
Yes, my meeting is adjourned. Thank you.